Well, I will go through the whole basic, I'm sorry. So the public hearing is for an air quality permit application submitted by WR Grace for the installation of a research-scale pilot plant, including small reactors, chillers, separators, feeders, samplers, with an exhaust stream cleaned by an electric flameless thermal oxidizer. The installation would be located at their Columbia facility. A notice announcing the opportunity for public to request an informational meeting was published in the Howard County Times, December 2nd and December 14th, and information was not requested, which is why we're having it this evening. Um, excuse me, so like Sonna was saying before, we could go on to the formal hearing and I will, you know, after we, they do the presentation to ask their questions if they have them, and then we'll move on to the rest of the general public that you've all, thank you very much again for coming in, and we'll move on from there. And so if you folks want to start your presentation, that would be great.
Thank you, Shannon. Can you hear me okay?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, great. So I think we wanted to start by saying thanks to MDE and to everybody who's joined the call for, you know, for the interest in our project. Like everyone has said, we're here at the request of MDE to try to give you some background on Grace and on the specific project that we're pursuing, which is one we're very excited about, Grace. Bob Riley, Grace's Director of Sustainability, and with me is Dr. Rob Harding. Rob, you want to introduce yourself quickly?
Hi, everyone. I'm Rob Harding. I'm Senior Technology Advisor for Grace, and I've worked for the company since 1989, so almost 35 years. I'm now working on the technology for this project, and it's really nice to hear, to meet you.
Thanks, Rob. So we'll cover some brief comments today about Grace activities in general, about our Columbia site, and about the new pilot plant that we are installing. And at the end of the comments, then, we'll ask for questions, if anybody has them, which I imagine, you know, we will have some. So I will say upfront, we're very focused on the pilot plant today, so if we have questions that go beyond Rob and my ability to answer, we'll provide you with a way to follow up with Grace around any of those areas at the end of this slide deck. So can we go to the next slide, please? Right here in Maryland. In fact, at our Columbia site, we employ about 4,500 people globally, and we have approximately $2 billion in annual revenues. And as you maybe can imagine, technology is a critically important aspect of our business, and we employ over 330 R&amp;D scientists in the company to foster that technology, with over 100 PhDs and a relatively large suite of patents that also support that business. Let me talk a little bit now about our Columbia campus, if we can go to the next slide. Okay, great. So as has been mentioned already, we've been residents of Howard County since the late 1950s, when we opened the site as our Washington Research Center. Today, the site plays two roles for Grace. First, as I mentioned, Columbia, or as was previously mentioned, Columbia is our corporate headquarters, and as corporate headquarters, it houses roles like HR, finance, IT, marketing, sales, and even the management of our company. And then, secondly, the site is a research center for Grace, which allows us to develop the technologies that support our business. As a frame of reference, that research is carried out at a scale that's very similar to sites like Johns Hopkins Applied Physics Lab or to a university setting. We hold all of the relevant licenses, permits, and zoning for this type of activity carried out on our site, and here we have a total of over 500 employees who make their day-to-day living, performing the various functions associated with either carrying out that research or the administrative activities associated with running the corporation. Let's go maybe to the next slide, please, and talk a little bit about Grace's products. Because, you know, many people aren't familiar with Grace as a brand, because the products that we make are not on supermarket shelves. They're critical parts of things that you're very familiar with in everyday life, but they're not products that you often directly encounter, tools that we use every day in transportation, and more recently, in renewable fuels. Other products enable the production of the petrochemicals that we rely on in modern life. And not only do our products do things like help refiners produce these fuels more efficiently, but they also help to do things like reduce emissions and meet environmental regulations at the refiners. On the silica side and in the related space of fine chemicals, we make products that enable things like the medicines that we all rely on in everyday life, high-performance materials for buildings and for transportation, and many other materials which are used to make products that we encounter every day more sustainable, more efficient, or more effective than the world. And so if you haven't encountered our brand before, it's very likely that a lot of the things that you encounter every day have been influenced by Grace's products. Let's switch to the next slide, please. So one thing I want to call out is that, as a specialty chemicals company, you know, one of the things that's very important to us is being a responsible citizen. Safety is one of the top priorities at our company, and in addition to a strong commitment to safety, we also have a strong commitment to all environmental laws. We are a member of the American Chemistry Council's Responsible Care Program now for over 20 years, and we have a very active sustainability program, which is my area of expertise for the company. And what we're trying to do with that program is to ensure that we tackle the biggest challenges that we think we can. Part of that sustainability program includes reducing the footprint of our production processes. And so you can see on this slide that we've established corporate targets around our activity in the world, on various endpoints, like CO2, water, and waste in our production processes. Additionally, we work to report our activity to a variety of frameworks, and one of them listed here is the ECOVADIS framework. For those who maybe aren't familiar with ECOVADIS, it's the largest corporate sustainability reporting framework in the world, rating over 100,000 companies each year. We're very proud to have been able to score in the top 2% of all companies listed by ECOVADIS in our last rating, and to have been able to maintain a fairly high level of rating by ECOVADIS for a number of years, and also, you know, strong ratings in other reporting frameworks as well. But I mentioned that using our capability at Grace to solve the biggest problems that we can is really, you know, kind of a exciting part of our sustainability ambition. And with that, I'd like to ask Rob to make a few comments about this specific project. So, Rob?
Absolutely. Could you move to the next slide, please? So plastic waste and what to do with it is a really important challenge for society. It's an area of public concern, because most single-use plastics today end up in landfills or worse, ocean fills. Our question is, can we apply Grace technology to find a better way? Because current methods of dealing with plastic waste all have issues. Some produce greenhouse gases, some create pollutants that need to be addressed, some use a lot of energy, some cost too much money and just aren't economical, some require too much waste sorting. This pilot plant that we're talking about is all about coming up with a better way to do it. Could you go to the next slide, please? Thanks. So, plastic waste is such an important issue. The world is working on a whole bunch of different approaches to deal with it. If I made a list of some of the things being tried right now, I would say, okay, well, we could, as a society, we could reduce the use of plastic, we could do better curbside collection, we could mechanically recycle plastic, we could incinerate plastic to recover its energy, we could cover, we could convert plastic to fuel, and maybe we could even start using more biodegradable plastics. Every one of those approaches has its advantages and disadvantages. And so Grace Research is seeking to develop a better approach, and we'll convert waste plastic directly back to plastic precursors and make it more of a continuous cycle, a loop. We're pretty excited about this, because if we're successful, we can reduce plastic waste going to landfills, we could use less oil to make plastics in the first place by connecting end-of-life plastic with beginning of new plastic. If we're successful, we could reduce greenhouse gases involved in the plastic life, plastic life cycle, and we could avoid pollution problems that some of the other processes have. But so, we're excited, but we know in the end that our solution is another tool in the toolbox. The eventual solution is going to be a mix of a lot of the approaches I just talked about, and it's going to be determined by regulations and economics and public opinion. Our goal, can Grace Research provide another tool? And so the next slide talks about, to figure out whether this is going to work, we're investing in a small pilot plant inside one of our existing buildings at the Columbia site. The pilot plant is going to be 24 feet high by 32 feet long by 12 feet wide, and it's got an emission control device using the best available emission, best available control technology to take care of any stray emissions. On the next slide, basically, how it works is this, we plan to feed up to 2 pounds an hour of hard-to-recycle plastics. This is not a round-the-clock operation, it's maybe two shifts, 8 to 16 hours a day. This reactor input is basically a gallon of plastic an hour, and that includes a mix of types 1 to 7 plastics, for those that know what that is. But by using our catalyst technology, we can change what the plastic is converted into. We know from small-scale studies that we can make almost 2/3 of it back into plastic precursors that could be used to make new plastic again. And so it'll also make a smaller amount of oils and waxes, but this is research. We're not producing things we want to sell, but learning how to do it, and whether it's worth doing on a large scale somewhere else. Any liquid products produced here just will be disposed of by, you know, safe laboratory practices that we follow, but, and we're using an emission control device that's highly efficient. We expect the emissions to be reduced by 99.99%, but for the permit, we assumed a more conservative estimate of only 99%. And so if the emission control works as advertised, the VOCs would be 1/100 of the number here. But using that more conservative estimate, the maximum emissions per day would be, well, for CO2, about 73 pounds per day, that's the amount of CO2 exhaled by 30 people each day. For, another, another emission is what they call VOCs, or volatile organic compounds, that's about a fifth of a pound per day at the maximum, that's the same, that's the same amount emitted if you used half a gallon of low VOC paint. It would also have the potential to produce 0.002 pounds of carbon monoxide, that's about the same amount that's 1/10 of a mile of a typical school bus, and it would also have the potential to do 0.011 pounds of nitrogen oxides, about the same as that same school bus driving a mile. It's really important to Grace not to cause any harm to the environment, and to keep, and also to keep the 500 people that work on our site safe, so we do a really complete safety review for any change. And let's go to the next slide. That's an overview, we can come back to it.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Rob. So I think in addition to emphasizing, you know, the points we've already made about the really exciting potential we think we have to develop this clean recycling technology, and, you know, there are a couple of other, you know, pros and cons, or maybe not cons, but, you know, things we want to point out about this project, right? So there will be a few new jobs created to support the running of the pilot plant, right? So that's one of the things that we're, you know, relatively excited about. But there are a couple of things that I want to make sure, you know, it's very, very clear, and hopefully can address some of the, some of the questions that you have. One of the things that this permit represents is not any kind of change to the type of work that we carry out today at this site. So just as simply the addition of a new unit to this site, right? We're not going to change any of the type of activity that we carry on at this site. So, you know, there's no expansion to the type or the function of activity beyond putting in a pilot plant to address, you know, this challenge. And then, very important to us is to make sure that everyone understands that there is no manufacturing carried out today on this site, and as a result of this permit application, that won't change. Our ultimate goal with this is to do the R&amp;D necessary to enable someone to install a larger-scale version of this process at another site, and that location would be determined at a later date, but there is no vision that we have that it would happen at our site in Columbia. And frankly, that would go beyond the capability that we've got based on existing permits and zoning and many other, you know, factors at the site. So it's very, very important that, you know, everyone understands that that is not part of our future plan now for this site. Can we go to the last slide? Okay, so this gets us to the end of the prepared comments that we've got, and I want to make sure that, you know, as we entertain some questions here, that, you know, we'll do our best to address what we can, but I'm sure there will be questions that we're not either able to address now, or, you know, that we would have to do some work to direct it to the right people to address on Grace's behalf. So I would invite anybody who's got a question that we can't immediately tackle to try to contact us through our website, which is grace.com/contactus. You should be able to find a link there to engage with Grace around those types of questions. So, and so I think we're ready to open to questions and, you know, here with what's on everyone's minds.
I appreciate that.
Hang on a second, sorry, somebody just signed in. Yeah, so I'm just going to leave this up so people can kind of take note, like what Grace was saying is, if you want to ask questions that you don't, or you don't get answers today, or you can't think of it today, you can go to grace.com/contactus, and you can talk to Grace directly by going to this non-product plus link here, so I'm going to leave this up so people can make a note. There's also going to be contact information for the department, too, for this process. All right, okay, so before, Shannon, you want to go ahead and call on if there's any elected officials that have any comments or questions before? There's actually some questions in the chat, and then maybe we can do a raise hand if anybody wants to speak after going through the written chat question.
Yep, I will happy to do that. I do want to do a quick statement, if there are certain areas that we are not able to put into a permit, we have no control over zoning, we have no control over traffic, we don't have any control over housing values. So if you have questions about those things, we're not going to be able to answer those, they're not part of our permit. I want to focus on the air quality issues this evening and your questions, and again, as Sonna said, if you have other questions, you can feel free to email me after tonight, and we will try to get those answers to you. So having said that, I would like to first call on Senator Ghazani, I think, is Eric speaking for your behalf tonight, I think? And again, what I'm going to do is offer these for questions, and then I'll go through this entire thing again when we go to the formal hearing, and I will again call on the elected officials first for formal statements. So for now, this is just the informal questions. So if Senator Ghazani or his representative would like to have a question, that would be great.
Yeah, my name is Eric, on behalf of Senator Ghazani. I don't have any questions, but I'll report back anything I learned from this meeting today, but thank you for having me.
Great, thank you. And let's see, I think Delegate Chow?
Hello. Yes, I'm here. First, I want to thank you for this opportunity to really give the opportunity to not just elected officials, but the residents in the village of River Hill, because they may be impacted. By understanding the project better, I think that maybe explain to the questions or try to address their concerns. I hope this process will be really helpful for both you, the WR Grace, and the department, and then the resident in our neighborhood. I really appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Um, let's see, Delegate Teresa?
Yeah, thank you for having us here. I don't want to take up time that, for residents to speak, but I just want to quickly ask if there's a map. I saw the map that you showed, the WR Grace folks showed with the location on their property, and do you have a map of that in the context of where people live? Because from what I recall, I haven't pulled up a map right now, but that's pretty close to the nearest residents that live on the property that you guys developed.
Yeah, thank you. So I mean, we are proposing to install this project in our Building 30, which is the building on our site that's really suitable for this. It does exist in the sort of location that you can see pictured on the, on the slide here.
The, where the surrounding residents are in comparison to that location?
Yeah, the fence line would run along the left edge of the map that you can see.
So that's right next to the residential?
Yeah, it is one of the buildings that is located near the fence line, yeah.
Yeah, it's about, it's about 280 feet from Building 30 to the fence line, and then another additional number of feet to the house.
Okay, I'll let others ask questions, and I probably have more, and I can follow you or find out more.
Okay. Um, let's see, um, okay, I'm sorry, Delegate Edbury was not able to join, correct? I believe she's not here. So, let's see, Councilmember Joe?
Thank you for having this meeting. I do appreciate it, and I am well aware of the fact that we may have missed the original communication, but I do really appreciate your responsiveness in going ahead and having this meeting tonight. I actually live right down the hill from Grace, across the river, and then up the hill, so I am very close to your corporate headquarters there, R&amp;D. And I have a couple of questions. One is, well, you're right on, you back right up to forest conservation, and I'm wondering if you know whether or not these emissions will have any impact on all the fauna and the flora that surrounds the Grace headquarters there? And my second question is whether you've done any studies to know whether there is an impact on human beings from these emissions?
So maybe I'll start. In terms of the level of emissions that we're talking about here, we're really talking about very, very low levels of emissions, and, you know, they're, you know, well within line of, you know, the emissions that, you know, that, you know, would be carried out in very small-scale research. So we really believe there's going to be really no impact on either the neighborhoods or the surrounding areas around Grace. To your second question of whether we have done appropriate studies, I mean, our design for the project is considered appropriate matters for, you know, for getting through our environmental permits through this process, so, you know, that would be, you know, really the relevant work that we've done to address, you know, what the impact is. And so, you know, I would, I would suggest that, you know, a lot of that information is actually presented in our permit application, and, you know, it's a useful reference to understand what's been done.
Yeah, I'd just follow up with that and say that, you know, I try to put it in the possible emissions in perspective by saying CO2 is about the same as 32 people exhaling every day, the VOCs were about half a gallon of low VOC paint, and then there's about a mile of school bus driving, and so the emissions are pretty low, as expected for a research facility.
So you have something that cleans all of this before it gets emitted, correct?
That's right.
Yes. So what if the machine that cleans this fails?
Right, so we're going to keep extensive records on the pollution control equipment, things like VOC leak detection, maintenance records, temperature records. Those are going to be available to the MDE on request, and the public can contact MDE to get that information as well. So we're going to be watching it very closely. The whole, the whole goal of the R&amp;D is to measure very carefully what goes in and measure very carefully what comes out. And so we can't do it, we wouldn't be doing our job as R&amp;D scientists without measuring the output.
But Rob, there's one other point to make sure it's very clear. You know, we will be actively monitoring that pollution control device as we are operating this unit, and should that device be in a state of not working, we would stop running our pilot plant, so we would immediately stop the emission source. And so that is a condition of the permit and is actively built into the, to the control, the control system for the entire installation.
Yeah, and I just wanted to chime in from the department's perspective. You'll hear a little bit more during the public hearing part about our technical review to ensure that what Grace is doing and operating is in accordance with applicable air quality regulations and compliance, and part of that will also be ensuring that the equipment is operated and maintained in a manner that reduces the pollution as expected. They do have to keep records, they have to maintain this equipment, and, you know, they cannot operate the pilot plant if the control device is non-operational. But you'll hear a little bit more about that in the public hearing portion. Shannon, do you have, oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. No, please let other people ask their questions, thank you.
Okay. Okay, the last elected official that I'm seeing currently is Delegate Pam Ghazani. If she has a question, then we can move back to Ms. Teresa. So Delegate Ghazani, there she goes. Okay, well, she was here. Okay, I guess she's not going to be speaking at this moment.
Hey, Shannon, since the chat questions have been in the chat for a while, I'd like to start with those first and then go to the raised hands.
I think that's perfect, yep.
Yeah, okay, and then, and then I'll call on the different raised hands, and you guys, I'll be able to unmute you, and you guys will be able to speak after the chat questions. So the first question we had, Alan Schneider, he said, what is the worst possibility that could happen if, to air quality, if filters, scrubbers, et cetera, did not work now or many years from now?
So I would say we addressed, I think, some of that with our, with our answer to, you know, the last question, you know, this, this installation would be, you know, work at this installation would be discontinued if a control device was not working. So, you know, I think the worst possibility that we envision is that we wouldn't be able to perform our research.
Right, I mean, as part of the new product development process, we take a look at safety and the impact of any potential change, and monitor that over time. So everything we do is in compliance with the regulations, but it's more than that, right? Employees have the right to stop work if they feel unsafe, and we have about 500 people on site, and we want to make sure they're safe, too.
Okay, and then from the department's perspective, like I said, they are required to properly operate and maintain all of their equipment. If they have to replace their control device, they can't operate the pilot plant if their control device is non-operational, they have to get another permit from us. It may not be a public review permit, because it might just be a replacement of a control device, but that has happened, and they do have to get another permit from us so that we can ensure that the new replacement control device is operated properly. Hopefully, that answered your question. Well, let's move on to the next question. Shakura C. says, I'm concerned about property values as we live directly adjacent to the proposed facility. I'm also concerned about water pollution and pollutants that will be released into the air we breathe. So we'll talk a little bit more during the public hearing portion about what we evaluate from an air pollution perspective, but I don't know, Grace, if you have anything to say about water pollution? Again, we can't comment on property values, but as far, like I said, I'm a resident of River Hill, I've been here since 1999, I haven't seen any effect that WR Grace has had on my property value, that's just my personal experience. I'm not trying to say that that's not going to happen, but we unfortunately can't take that into account in an air pollution permit. But yeah, I don't know, Bob, if you want to talk a little bit about water pollution, what you guys do for that?
Are you still there? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, sorry, I thought I lost you for a moment. No, I would say, in terms of the emissions, we, I think we spelled it out in our permit, right? There will be air-related emissions, but, you know, any liquids collected in this process really are not going to wind up in our waterways at all, it would go into, you know, waste management procedures on the Grace site, which involve licensed and registered, you know, third-party companies who deal with liquid wastes, right? That's part of our everyday life as a research facility, right? So, you know, there is no, you know, water pollution that would come from this process, because, you know, our procedures would not allow us to put any liquids collected in this process into any waterway.
Right, I mean, we really Right, I mean, we, we really value the detailed discussions we have with the Maryland Department of the Environment. They, they act as another pair of eyes to make sure that we achieve our, our goal of upholding good environmental standards. And, uh, together we can, we can look for better ways to do things, but they, the, uh, there are things that built into the system like secondary containment in case somebody spills something, uh, so it, it won't go into the water table.
Okay, uh, we have a question from Eric Daniels. Reading through the permanent filing, it appears that the overwhelming pollutant is CO2 with trace amounts of other gases. Uh, what is the source of carbon that becomes CO2 in the end? Is it something extracted from the plastic or from chemicals injected into the process?
Rob, do you wanna take this one or would you like me to?
Sure, I, I would just say that most plastic itself is carbon-based. It comes from the, uh, oil, from the oil chain and therefore it contains carbon. And so when plastic is converted into things, that contains carbon. And when we, when we use that flameless emission, emission control, it converts that, those hydrocarbons to, to CO2. So it comes from the plastic itself, not additives or, or anything we're adding.
Um, yeah, and to put, to put this in perspective, a, a new major source of greenhouse gases or CO2 emissions would be 100,000 tons per year. And I believe you said it was 73 pounds, is that right?
That's right.
Just, just to let you know, this is actually a, a, a very, very minor source of CO2 emissions, although it is probably the largest, of all the pollutants, they are emitting mostly CO2. Um, okay, so the next question, um, I guess it's Renee Maldonado. There's a question of for how long would the pilot facility be operational? I'm not sure if that means like per day or is it gonna go on for infinitely forever?
Yeah, I, I think, uh, you know, we, we intend to operate the pilot facility for up to two shifts per day, uh, which is part of our, our permit. Uh, you know, how long this pilot facility would be operational, you know, will depend on, you know, how well we're able to develop this technology into the future. And so, you know, we envision answering a number of important technical questions to develop this technology and launch it. Uh, and then we envision a role for, uh, this pilot plant in the future to help us, you know, to continue to develop the technology and improve it over time. You know, so I think, you know, we expect a fairly long run in terms of, uh, the, uh, the amount of years that we would want to operate this pilot plant. Again, all of that is predicated on the success of, or being able to demonstrate the success we expect, uh, you know, in, uh, in the process itself.
Okay, and the next question is, um, from Eric Daniels. Again, what is the expected average annual salary for the new jobs created with this permit to construct?
That's a question I don't have the answer to at the tip of my tongue. So, uh, you know, one we may, uh, you know, want to follow up on.
And then Alan Schneider, again, this is a pilot project. If successful, how big could the manufacturing be, plant be on Grace's property? I understand that once permitted, an expansion or zoning approval would be essentially easy to approve at this location.
Yeah, so, so on that front, I think I addressed it kind of at the end of the remarks, but there would be no manufacturing plant envisioned, uh, now or in the future at this site. Our zoning, uh, does not allow for that. Uh, we do not view the, uh, a, any expansion or alternate zoning process for this location to be an easy, uh, you know, possibility for us, uh, nor do we have any, um, any roadmap that consists of doing any manufacturing on this site. It's simply not part of what we want this site to be.
Um, also just from the department's perspective, for any public review comments, so just this one from the application, we do require evidence of zoning approval for this proposed project, which they provided from Howard County, that their, that this pilot project is within, is in allowed use in their existing zoning. Um, I do recommend that, you know, if there are zoning decisions in the future, that you are involved in those. That's outside of our purview, but a lot of people ask us what it is that they can do if they're not happy with a project being located. And I'm not trying to throw WR Grace under the bus, but I'm just saying that it starts with zoning. Um, you need to talk to your local zoning authority about, um, you know, what they're gonna allow or not allow and before we even get a permit application. So we have to, they have to have zoning approval before we're able to move on any air quality permit. Um, okay, so for, let's see, I Matters, this is Renee Maldonado. How would your emissions compare to those from automobile traffic?
Yeah, I think Rob had some pretty good examples of that. Um, you know, for, for the VOCs, uh, carbon monoxide, the VOCs, I think you had an example related to a half a gallon of low VOC paint, right, Rob?
That's right. Yeah, and the, uh, and the, the carbon monoxide and nitrogen oxide is about the same as a school bus driving a mile. Uh, cars, they're different sizes and some cars are electric and some are not, but I'm talking about gasoline powered.
And, and you were talking in, I guess in the school bus example, about a single diesel-powered school bus, right?
That's right.
Okay, um, the next question from Dee Wade. You mentioned the pilot, pilot, pilot plant will be inside an existing building already on site. Will there be any new construction on the site?
So, uh, let me, let me make sure we understand how, how this equi, this question is, is intended to be posed. So, uh, there will be new construction on the site in that the pilot plant itself is classified as new construction. But if the question is around, will there be any new buildings added to the site, the answer is no.
Okay, and, uh, from E Jane, what is the height of the stack and will it be located on the property? We do have that information on our website. There's docket, um, of information. I think I'm gonna try and share that again, just because I know a lot of people came in a little late to this meeting. But if you go, um, uh, let me, sorry, let me start from the beginning and then share this page. Um, if you go to the main Maryland Department of the Environment website, which is MDE.Maryland.gov, um, you can go to our air, um, link at the top. This is the easiest way to get there. Air quality permitting, and then it'll take you to their quality permitting homepage. If you scroll down to where it says schedule public hearings, you'll see WR Grace is listed. This docket, this link here, this contains all the information from when we received the permit all the way through to now. Um, so it has a draft permit that you guys can view. It has the application, so you can take a look at all of that, um, in this, in this set of information here. And it should have like the stack heights and things like that to answer your questions. We are, Shannon will go into a little bit more detail about how long this comment period is gonna be, but you're gonna have an ample amount of time. People have already requested a 60-day extension, so you will have time to review this docket, um, even formulate additional questions that you can either ask WR Grace directly, or you can ask our public participation coordinator to get those answers for you. And we'll talk a little bit more about that, um, during the hearing portion of it. Um, okay, so next, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, I would just add that if you, if you read that document, uh, what you'd find is that we're, you know, we're using the best available control technology and that results in adding two additional tubes for emissions control. One is 10 feet high and one is 30 feet high on top of a building that's already 30 feet high. And so this is no higher than the tubes that are on the building right next to it. And I don't think the closest neighbor is gonna be able to see it through the trees.
All right, so the next question from Renee Maldonado. Would Grace conduct periodic air sampling and share the results with us?
So it, you know, our intent here is to conduct the air sampling and, and all of the controls that are required by MDE, right? This is really, uh, you know, how we intend to approach, you know, ensuring that, uh, you know, that we are, uh, in compliance with, with this permit, right? You know, if there's a questions about air sampling beyond, you know, what's required by MDE here, I think we would ask for engagement outside of the school.
Yeah, and then from a department's perspective, uh, WR Grace is a state operating permit source as well, so they are required to renew, they have a annual oper, or they have an operating permit that has a term of five years. Every five years it's renewable. Um, as an operating permit source, they are required to certify their emissions from any of their sources of air pollution at their site, um, every year. And they also pay an emissions base fee, um, based on those emissions, so they certify those annually. And those records are public. Um, you would have to file a public information act request to the department, but you can view emissions certification reports for this facility. Um, okay, so if the final intention is to have the operational version of the plant to be located elsewhere, why do you have to have the R and D prototype at this location? This is a largely residential area.
So I think the, the easy answer to that is that, you know, WR Grace's activities in this area are really geared at exactly this type of activity, right? So this is the type of activity that we carry out on the site, uh, you know, every day. We've got the right capabilities on the site. Uh, we've got the right, uh, you know, permits on the site to do this. We've got the right talent on the site to carry out this type of activity. So for us, this, uh, this type of R and D, uh, really fits very well with today's use of the site.
Okay, next question. I only received notification about this last week. When did the process for this zoning start? I don't think you needed an additional zoning approval for this, is that correct? You just needed confirmation that your existing zoning was allowed use, which is what we require. Um, because the site already exists and it has allowed uses and we require Howard County to confirm that, um, that this proposal isn't allowed use under their current zoning approval. So it wasn't a new zoning approval that was required. I think I got that one. Um, okay, so do you have any other R and D activities at the site and how does it compare? What are the cumulative emissions?
Yeah, so, uh, in this case, we do have other R and D activities at the site as, as we've talked about, um, you know, through the, the presentation and comments. Um, this, this is a relatively small amount, uh, compared to the, the activities across the site. Uh, it does meet the thresholds though for MDE to require us to go through this process.
And, um, again, Renee Maldonado, for PM emissions, any air opacity expected. So when we go through the public hearing, you'll see that opacity zero, uh, is zero. They're not allowed any opacity except during like startups and adjustments. So the limit is zero. Um, so we would not expect any and they would not be able to actually emit any opacities. But we'll go into that in a little bit more detail about what we're going to start hearing about the draft permit and this limits and restrictions. Um, another question from Alan Schneider, why near residential area, why not at Grace's other locations? And I think we talked about that a little bit, right, Bob? I think you mentioned, um, th- this facility has been an R and D facility since 1957 and it made it its corporate headquarters in 1999. So it actually has like administrative staff in this building as well. It's always been an R and D site. Um, so it's always been located there. Um, okay, another question, and I don't have an answer to this, is why did Grace sell off all this land to homeowners then decide to do this? I don't have any details on that whatsoever.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I would say I, that, that's not how I think we, uh, this process, I, I don't think we, the, you know, the, the move to sell land and then decide to do this is really what's happening here, right? We, we, you know.
I just, I just wanna remind folks that, that we do need to keep the focus on this air quality permit application. Um, going outside the, the bounds of that, asking about selling off property, it does not reflect on the conditions of this permit application. So I do wanna keep the focus back on where we are for tonight, which is the air quality permit. So, but thank you, Bob.
Okay, so there's just a number of, uh, comments. Um, there's one about the neighborhood being, uh, just behind building 30, um, but there's no new buildings and then, uh, so no new buildings within an existing building with emissions, reconfiguring a building? I don't, I don't know if you're reconfiguring anything. I think it's within an existing building that you have there.
Yeah, we're installing this, uh, within an existing building.
Yeah. Okay, and then the questions related to emissions, we're actually gonna cover that in the public hearing portion. So, uh, like what standard are you using to declare the volume of emissions or the stated level of emissions assumed all goes according to plan and that raises concerns? Um, there's copies of reports made by medical professionals serving on the IRB. I don't know what that is, but that can be made available. So, um, by all means, if anybody has any information, they can submit it to Shannon. We will be posting her contact information at the end of this. Um, and then another one is the location this pilot project conforms to state planning guidelines. Again, I think that's a question that you could probably send to Grace where regarding location of industrial operations. I don't have, I don't have any background on state planning guidelines, but maybe, um, if you send that question either to Shannon and he can relay it to Grace, we can get that answer for you. Um, and then I, I think, uh, we have a question from Phyllis Kelly. Phyllis, she is my neighbor. Um, there are no new buildings, but can you describe the new stacks that we built? And we'll talk a little bit, um, about that. The stack information's in the application, but we will talk a little bit more about what they're gonna be limited and restricted to. Hopefully we'll get that answer for you. If not, it's on our website, so you can peruse the application. You guys are gonna have plenty of time to take a look at it, ask questions. Um, and then, okay, Mr. Harding and Bob Riley's credentials. I don't know, did you guys talk about that at all? I think we can probably?
We didn't, but, but I'm happy to share it a little bit and then maybe invite Rob. So, you know, I, I've got, uh, a bachelor of science from Johns Hopkins, uh, in, uh, chemical engineering, uh, and a master's of business administration from the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign. I've been working at WR Grace, uh, since graduating Johns Hopkins, so that's now about about 26 years.
Yeah, and I have a, a bachelor's degree in chemistry from Princeton University and a PhD in physical chemistry from Stanford University, but that was a long time ago. I joined Grace in 89.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so Delegate Torasi, you have a question. It says you, you mentioned you're actively monitoring or you're required to report if it malfunctions, or is the data only available with MDE requests? So there are malfunction requirements in the permit. Um, I believe Susan will be covering that. Um, they are required to report things that are malfunctions or excess emissions lasting over an hour. Um, but yes, they, anything that results in an excess emission, I believe Grace is required to report it to the department, not just when we request it. Um, okay, and then also from Phyllis, again, we have, can you please explain the process for estimating these exhaust numbers? Um, I did not see that in your application. So, um, Susan, I think when you talk about that in your public hearing statement, I'm not sure if you go into detail about how the emissions are estimated, but, but we can, hopefully we can cover that in the hearing portion. Um, is there a possibility that any mass production will happen at that site? And I think we've answered that, right? You said no. Um, uh, we're continuing monitoring air quality, being open and available to the public. So, um, again, that's kind of, it's not required by permit, but it is accessible information. Whatever's required by the permit, you can actually request access to through the Maryland Department of Environment. Um, and, oh, Delegate Kazan, we have, uh, she said my microphone is not working, but she doesn't have any questions. So, okay, thank you. Thanks for commenting. Um, are there pilot plants already on site? They do have some other operations that are covered by an air operating permit, so this is in addition to that as well. Um, we do have records of that, so if you want copies, uh, or information, you can always submit a public information act request to the department to get that information. And then there's a question about what are the other pollutants? We're gonna go through a summary of the pollutants in our public hearing statement. Um, you know, we, it's in the tentative termination, the docket as well, so, uh, hopefully we'll answer that question for you. Uh, let's see, um, this is again a question about the residential and why not have the R and D project at one of your other sites. That's just a, a question for Grace. Um, I don't, unfortunately, the department can't answer that question. Um, so if you want to submit that directly to Grace, they can, they can talk to you about why. They sort of, this is the question over others.
I think the most important answer to that is, uh, this is where the scientists are, and we wanna connect it to the science.
Um, so is this process chemical driven or what chemicals or range of chemicals?
Right, so this is, this is a catalytic process. A catalyst is a material that increases the efficiency of a reaction and kind of changes what products that are, what products are made. So that's like less energy, lower temperature, higher percentage of the plastic converted to useful products, more recursors, less fuel, and the catalyst itself is a solid. It's very similar to other things we make. It absorbs a lot of contaminants on itself, concentrating them for disposal.
And then what external changes are necessary to building 30 to install the oxidizer? I think you mentioned already there will be a stack installed. Um, and then how many fail-safe processes do you, do we have to make sure no harmful gases escape? What is the health effect on humans and animals being exposed to plastic residual chemical burn for extended period of time? How frequent will the third-party state and county inspections be going on this pilot? And then what is the source of chemicals being produced? So, um, some of that will be answered in the public hearing portion, but again, we can, um, try and get some of these questions answered for you. There's just a number of them. We wanna try and get through the hearing portion of this. Um, medical conditions arising from long-term exposure. So the air quality permits program has a robust air toxics, um, regulatory program. So any air toxic emissions that might possibly be released from this process are evaluated. So any air toxic emissions that may possibly be released from this process are evaluated. They can't exceed a threshold that's determined for each toxic air pollutant at the fence line in excess of one one-hundredth of what a worker would be exposed to at the facility. We're extremely stringent on emissions. As far as certain medical conditions, we are, the Department of Health, so I couldn't comment on actual medical conditions resulting from toxic air pollutant emissions, but we can tell you that they did meet our, our stringent air toxics regulation that's designed to protect public health. The other statistic somebody asked about the school bus driving a mile every hour, every day?
Sorry, that, that was, uh, school bus. It's, it's one-tenth of a mile during that, one-tenth of a mile or, or one mile during that one mile. So it usually doesn't take an hour for that to happen, but that's, that's a whole day of operation and that's what it's equal to for a school bus driving that long.
Okay, so it's per day?
Right.
So to be clear, it's, our emissions per day are related to the school bus driving those relatively short distances in total, right? Not routinely every hour on the school bus. So want to make sure we're not confusing anybody.
Okay, thanks, Bob.
Okay, and so the chemical levels with CO2? What if the cleaner mechanism does not work? What is the risk for humans living behind Grace? So we did talk about this. If the air pollution control device is not operational, they cannot operate the pilot plant, they have to shut it down. And that's part of, uh, part of that process. And then we have a question about, can you explain the reactor and separator? That's a good question for Grace. I don't know if you guys want to explain that a little bit more in detail?
Sure.
How, and then there's a related question, how Grace defines reactor? Like what is that?
Sure, so, so, you know, a reactor is basically a metal tube that has, has stuff inside it. Our pilot plant, we're building a, a set of reactors where catalysts and plastic go in and products come out. And the catalyst is sent to a regenerator so it can be used again. We, we measure the liquids and gases that are produced and the, the reactor itself is a, is, is, is kind of a fluidized reactor, so the catalyst is always moving and contacting the, contacting the plastics. And, you know, this is, this is research scale, so it's, uh, these are pretty small. I don't know if you can see my hands, but it's, it's a third of a meter inside, what's that, a foot in size? And, and the chillers and separators and things like that are really meant to separate the products and make sure that they're, they're trapped.
Has Grace retained any independent, non-employed scientists and/or engineers to evaluate the project? So would you release their reports? Would Grace identify and release the public in their entirety? Any different engineering reports evaluated, both, that evaluated both the benefits and possible risks of the project?
So I would say on this front, we, we did retain an independent engineering firm to assist with the permit preparation. All of the information that that firm produced is actually part of our permanent application. So, you know, essentially has been released to the public already. So, you know, that, that would constitute really sort of the, the amount of information that we've got.
Okay, um, let's see. Okay, as part of this research, it says you will be incinerating plastics that are classified as PFAS for rubber chemicals. And I, maybe you guys can clarify, it says what monitoring will you have specifically for PFAS?
Yeah, so, so there can be, uh, let me, let me see if I can get this. So, so remember the goal of this project is develop technology to, to process real plastic waste, but real plastic waste varies a lot and it's hard to control and it's hard to characterize. So from our R and D perspective, to get there faster, what we need to do is to study very well-controlled set of plastic samples and vary the composition on purpose. And so what we're, we're planned to study some of these plastics. PFAS should be entirely eliminated. The fluorine should go into the water that we're collecting and, and removing. The, the hydrocarbon should be burned to CO2. We're going to be monitoring that very carefully. The, I think another, another way to, another way to say it is we've, we've looked very carefully at the other, at the pollutants from the other processes. There are, there are other processes out there and they have, they have pollutants. And so we, our small scale, one gram testing has shown we don't produce those pollutants, but that's one of the reasons why we need to scale it up. The EPA is looking at things like PFAS and, and we're, and that's something we'll be looking for. But by, by thermodynamics, it, it should be, this is one of the processes that actually gets rid of, rid of PFAS.
Yeah, so will there be visible steam leaving the stack? So steam is actually allowed if it's wa, if it's water vapor, but there's no opacity for smoke, so they're not allowed to have visible emissions except during like very small startup and shutdown periods. And then page 47 of the docket, this is actually a pretty specific comment. So I don't know, Matt or Susan, if you want to take a copy of that and we can get an answer back to this person. Joel Kuritz, it's page 47 of the docket talks about the test polarization process. So Matt, do you guys mind if you can get a copy of that? And then we'll be able to respond back to Joel later because I think this refers to past processes, so I'm not sure what they're referring to there. But just for the sake of time, because we want to get this hearing moving on the actual draft permit, again, it talks about research and development, residential community right behind Grace. Why you didn't consider other, this is, these are all questions for, for Grace that they can answer if you, if you send in your questions to Grace at their site or you can send them to Shannon, Shannon can get those answers for you. The total emissions of CO2 that you'll release in the residential neighborhood, again, they actually are required to certify their emissions annually. So you can actually request Public Information, Information Act request to find out what they certify annually. The department, we can, we can talk about where you can get that. I mean, if you just search PIA, MDE, it should come up.
It does, it comes right up.
Okay. Can you speak to past cleanup or restoration efforts Grace has had to pay for in the past? And so I don't know if this is related to this site or past sites, Grace? I don't know if you have any, any comment on that?
Yeah, I think this is a question that we would ask to address outside of the scope of the penitentiary.
Got it.
Agreed.
Yep, and then the next question is about MDE verifying to verify Grace's calculations. We will talk about that in the hearing portion. The prevailing wind direction relative to building 30, wind generally blows eastward, so I would think it would blow emissions east towards Cedar Lane and away from Cedar Creek and Porter's Run. I don't, I'm not sure if that's a question, but I don't know what the prevailing wind direction is relative to building 30. I don't know if anybody has any answers for that one. But generally speaking, I don't think that, we, we don't actually take wind direction into account unless it's something that needs to be modeled. In this case, their emissions are so low that that isn't taken into consideration in this particular application. So this is also impacts on, they want to know if there's going to be an impact on their infant that has interstitial lung disease and is on oxygen. So like I said, our standard air toxics regulations that are designed to protect public health represent one one-hundredth of the worker exposure level that the worker at the actual facility is, is allowed to be exposed to in an eight-hour period. So if they're, you know, one one-hundredth of that number, they can't exceed that at the fence line of their property. And that would account for, there could be a hundred of those sources and that's still at the level that one worker at the site could be exposed to. So we do have a very stringent requirement for that and it takes into account seniors, elderly, infants, et cetera. That's our protective level. How do we know when it shut down? How do, does MDE monitor if the cleaner valve does not work? How will we know if it stopped cleaning and the public is exposed? So we'll talk a little bit more about that in the hearing. And, and then again, we have a question from Phyllis Kelly, is this a nuclear-based reactor?
No.
Okay, yeah. And then what is the frequency with which Grace's cleaning valve is checked by state authorities? We'll talk about that a little bit more too. And these are also questions that you can ask during the public hearing periods that we have it on record and we'll prepare formal responses to those. How often it's inspected, et cetera. How frequent is surrounding air? Again, these are all questions we can bring up or we can respond back to. Like I said, Matt, I don't know if you want to take, make sure that we get a copy of all of these questions. Legal fines, that's not really related to this?
No.
Oh, legal fines for not, yeah, so we are not the air quality compliance program. Once we issue these permits, our compliance program is responsible for enforcing those regulations. And then legal fines are defined, there's in regulation about, you know, Grace is found in violation of any requirement, there are fines and there's regulations to find how much, how long, et cetera. That's kind of beyond our purview, it gets referred to the Office of Attorney General who they, they do work for the department, well, they, they work for the Attorney General's office, but they're housed for MDE cases and we have a lot of those enforcement cases. But I couldn't give you any ideas right now about if Grace was not compliant.
Right.
Air sampling, again, we'll talk about that a little bit more on, during the public hearing part of that. We're, I'm not, we're not deferring this. I think one of the questions is please ask instead of deferring some of, we haven't had the public hearing portion of this meeting yet. The public hearing is the draft permit. That's the department's review, the technical review of the application. Hopefully some of those questions will be answered. If they're not, please raise them during the public hearing comment section. And then we did have one question in the Q and A, just real quick. Again, it says how much CO2 or other pollution does Grace, is Grace currently releasing to the environment? That information, if, we can get that information to you. I don't have it available, but I do know this one was, I forget what you said, how many pounds a day it was? But again, if you file a public information act request, you can actually see all of the annual certified emissions for all of what Grace certifies every year. Okay, and then we have some hands raised, but I know a lot of you also put questions in the chat, so hopefully we got some of that answered. Let me see if I can, uh, I don't know if the, I don't have an order for which the hands were raised, unfortunately. Sorry, there's yet another question in here. Yeah, again, Matt, Susan, do you guys see these comments that are directed at you about the letter? I'm not sure what we're talking about. So some of this may not be related to this particular air permit, so we're going to go ahead and try and get this public hearing started, but I do recognize a lot of you may, raise your hands if you have any comments. I'm going to call on the ones I don't recognize ever made any comments in the chat first. So Sarah Noonan, do you have anything to comment? I can unmute you. Oh, wait, I can unmute you, you have to unmute yourself. No, thank you, my questions were addressed, thank you. Okay, great. Okay, and then CRCA executive?
Yes.
Oh, okay, do you have any questions?
Yes, I have a couple of quick questions. Is the proposed permit for an incinerator?
It is not. It's for a plastics recycling. It's not an incinerator. It doesn't actually, I, I mean, Grace can go into more detail about it, but it's not considered an incinerator.
I understood that they were going to burn their product to see how much energy was in it. That sounds like an incinerator. Is that correct?
No, that, that's really not what this is about at all. What we're trying to do is to develop a new recycling process. And so, you know, the, the plastic that will be fed to this is really going to be converted into high-value chemicals, right? The conversion will be measured and we'll be able to develop the necessary information to determine what would be necessary to practice this at large scale in another location. That's what this is about.
Does the proposed permit allow for use anytime, day, any day, anytime, day or night?
No, the, the proposed permit allows us to operate up to two ships per day. You know, we envision those to be primarily during, you know, waking hours.
And, and up to 4,000 hours a year, which is about half, half the year.
And VOCs is the main topic of concern. Do VOCs include methyl chloride, tetrachlorohepylate and formaldehyde as possibilities?
No, they, they should not.
Okay, do, uh, does exposure to VOC cause cancer, kidney, or liver damage, or central nervous system damage, or dizziness?
Sir, according, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt a little bit because that is a health department question and not something that we are able to answer. As Sana has mentioned on several moments, that we work with one one-hundredth of the allowable OSHA exposure. We have one of the strictest toxic regulatory programs in the country. So it, perhaps if you were to read through the application or listen to the tentative determination that's going to be entered into the public record momentarily, that might answer some of your questions. And if that doesn't, if you want to send me an email tomorrow, I will see what I can do to get you some more information.
Thank you, that's all.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, we do, one more thing I just want to address in the chat, and I'm just going to call on a couple more of these names, but one of the things in the chat, they wanted, that most people do, were not aware of this permit application, they want to know if there's another opportunity for public, for public information session. Unfortunately, there isn't under, under the law. However, we have, the, the public has already requested a 60-day extension of the public comment period and we're recording this meeting. So I'm, when this, it takes about 24 hours for Google to process this large video file, then I have to work with IT to develop a link, but we'll send a link out to every interested person and feel free to share that with people. And you will have until July 29th to submit comments, so you can share that video link with other people so they can learn about the product, process, and then they can also comment as well. Okay, and then Alan Schwartz, you had a question? Or comment?
Yeah, I actually was interested, the, the presentation was interesting, but I specifically wanted to know if the reports of any independent experts would be released and also if any reports from internal scientists and engineers would be released to the public. And, and I noticed, I give you some credit, but I noticed that you didn't answer that question except to say that the independent experts as part of your permit application, and that isn't exactly what we're looking for. We're looking to see what they said to Grace in, in their entirety as to the benefits and risks of the project. And the same is true with regard to the internal engineers and scientists. Undoubtedly, you gentlemen and others have incredible credentials, but that doesn't answer the question. There is too often opportunities where companies do not want the public to see what undoubtedly is part of the evaluation process that, that Grace went through before it promoted this.
If you folks are able to answer that tonight, that's fine. If that's something you can answer right now. Alan, if you would do me a favor and send that to me in an email, I will be happy to get information to you as soon as possible. That is important.
I think that's the right way to answer this question because it's a, it's a complicated question, but we need to answer it for you.
Right, yeah, so some of the more, some of the more detailed questions, because we do want to get this hearing started, we do want you guys to get some of your time back and, and end the hearing hopefully at 8:00 as scheduled, but there are two more hands. We have Ayesha Hassan. Do you have any questions? You can unmute yourself, or Anwar Hassan also has their hand raised. If your questions are answered, we can kind of.
No, no, I, I have a question, sorry about that. I've been ready for at least hour and a half now. So my, my question, I know MDE very well, they are very stressed out with resources. And one other question Alan Schwartz asked, which is very relevant, that who did the peer review of whatever the, the pollution they're talking about which would be emitted? I mean, that is something which you should be sharing with us, not the engineer from the Grace who has done the evaluation and given them the, the green signal to proceed with it. It, it's not the way, it should be, should be the peer review, which should be independent of Grace, should be shared with the public, and that's when we, we'll be, we'll determine that yes, you are fine to proceed with this valid testing. And the second question I have is this facility, which has been now in the permit situation, will that facility will only be doing this plastic testing and nothing else? Or they will now go on and do something else later on and continue on with the process? So those are my two questions.
I think we answered the first question by stating that we will look into the information for you as Mr. Schwartz had asked. And also feel free to send me an email, Mr. Hassan, so I can add your contact information to the same email that I will be able to get from Mr. Schwartz. It's like, you know, Richard or Susan Robert has said it's going to be complicated, it won't be an easy. It won't be an easy answer, and I want to make sure we get all of the answers that we can. So if you would be willing to wait a little bit, let me get the information to you. I'd rather make sure we get the whole information to you, which would be great. And Miss Noonan, same thing, please feel free to send me an email, happy to do the same thing. And your second question, I'm so sorry, Mr. Hassan was what, again?
This facility will only be allowed to be utilized for this plastic testing and nothing else? Because I know these companies, what they do, they start with something, and then they continue on proceeding with other tests going on, and the public doesn't know anything about it, and they grandfather it under their own permit.
So, you know, again, we can try and get that information to you. We're going to, we're going to give you opportunity to contact Shannon, we're going to show Shannon's contact information. She is our public participation coordinator. We ask that you email her, simply so that she can control, you know, all of the information and collect it all so that it doesn't go to me and it goes to somebody else and I have to forward it to her. She actually is the one who maintains our interested parties list. If you want to be added, if you weren't already registered through the Google form and you want to be added, or you're not sure, please, please email Shannon, and we'll get that, and then you can also send questions as well, and we'll try and work on getting those answered back to you.
Can you share Shannon's email in the chat?
Yes, we're going, well, we haven't even started the public hearing yet, guys, so when we get there, we will post the contact information online again, touch on Shannon, we're not letting you guys go yet, don't worry.
Yeah, you don't get to leave yet, we're not done.
This is, this is Ayesha, sorry, I was having some issues with my, with my microphone. Thank you for the presentation, appreciate you guys taking the time to walk us through this. I actually live in the neighborhood right next to Grace, so right behind building 30. When we were sold this house, we were told, you know, there were not going to be any additional kind of R and D that were above the threshold and things along that nature, which I understand, you know, it's a sales thing. Regardless, we live here in this neighborhood, and there are a lot of infants, like Sarah mentioned, and a lot of elderly folks as well, so I would say the entire community is pretty concerned about this new research and development project that's going on. So we have put quite a few questions into the chat, which I feel were quite deferred to a later date. But I do want to put them for the record and would like to have those questions answered, particularly the ones about the chemicals that are going to be produced from this plastic project. What is that, what are the total emissions that are going to come out from Grace, including that new R and D project? And then also, what are the health impacts? I know you said you're not the health department, which is fine, but that is, somebody from the MDE or somebody from Grace needs to be able to answer these questions, as residents who live right behind Grace. Because we're going to be the guinea pigs, right? We're going to be the ones who are getting all these lovely chemicals put into our, into the air we breathe, our children, our infants, our toddlers, our elderly, they're the ones who are, we're going to get sick, right? We won't know these implications of health concerns.
Oops. Oh, we lost you.
No, but we definitely appreciate this, again, this, this meeting's going to be recorded, hopefully we'll get all of your questions answered. Also, in that docket that I shared on our website, you know, it's a lot. It's a very comprehensive permit package, and what we conducted the technical review on is what's going to go next in this public hearing portion that we're going to start hopefully fairly soon. But hopefully some of those questions will be answered. But again, if they're not answered, there is an extension on the comment period, and also we're taking informal questions as well, you can email Shannon, and we'll send you all that contact information. If you don't get your answers now, feel free to send them between now and, you know, whatever, we're, yeah. You have, well, you have until July 29th to submit comments. If you want your questions answered earlier than that, please feel free to send those to Shannon. But we do have what's called a tentative determination fact sheet document in the docket that talks about the department's review, what we're obligated to review under the Clean Air Act, and what their emissions are projected to be, and why we determine that an air quality permit could be issued. This draft permit is available for public comment. So that's where we're going to start the hearing on, Shannon, I don't know if you want to go already?
Yep, I think we should, because I do believe some of the answers folks will find in the tentative determination. So, so I'm going to ask our court reporter to begin recording, and we're going to move into the formal part, which is the public hearing. I'm going to read a statement, some of you have already heard part of the information, my apologies. I do have to make sure this gets into the record. So, and so again, for the record, my name is Shannon Heffey, I'm the Air Quality Permits Program Public Participation Coordinator. I am serving as hearing officer this evening. Pardon me. Also here from the department is Ms. Sunny Sarasak, manager of the Air Quality Permits Program, Mr. Matt Hafner, chief of the Chemical and Mineral Division, and Ms. Susan Nash, who's a senior permit engineer who's assigned to review the application and drafted the draft permit. WR Grace is being represented by Mr. Bob Riley, he's the director of sustainability, and Dr. Rob Harding, senior technology advisor.
Yeah, hey, this is.
Excuse me?
This is Ayesha, I just got, I just got kicked, this is Ayesha, someone just kicked me off while I was asking my.
Yeah, I don't know what happened.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah.
I'm not sure, but that is also quite concerning, because I'm raising questions that all of our neighbors have, because we're the community right behind Grace, and then I just magically get kicked off.
Uh, it wasn't intentional, it was actually not intentional.
We just thought we lost, like, internet.
No, I didn't, I did not, no, 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 I have perfect, perfect bars, so it's concerning to me that I got kicked off, but I would like my time to be able to relay my questions before I was kicked off. I'm not sure where I got kicked off.
So we're in the middle of the public hearing portion of it?
I understand. Okay, so I do, as the neighborhood, we would like to ask a series of questions, so I'm not sure why I'm not able to ask that on behalf of my neighborhood. I'm one of the ones that are probably years behind Grace.
There's a public comment portion of the hearing, this is all being recorded, and then also you can submit the questions to Shannon via email as well. So unfortunately, we already started the public hearing portion of it, I apologize for the technical difficulty, we just thought somehow you just got caught off the middle.
No, 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 someone kicked me off. Just for the record.
It wasn't, and I do want to ask my question. Okay, we have had trouble with the Google Meet on occasion, and we talked about that in the beginning of the informational meeting section, that we apologize, sometimes this happens. I actually almost just got kicked off when we started earlier tonight. So my apologies for that, but we will make sure that we get your questions down and answered and out for other people to hear the answers to.
And how do we do that?
You can send me, you can send me a quick email, and I'm going to be putting the information together for all the questions that we're receiving, so we can get the information to you. And if you were to, and I'll go through this, but if you were to raise any questions during the public hearing part tonight, those will be answered in a document that's called a response to comments, and that gets sent out to everybody who's participating. So everyone can hear the question, or read the question, and then get the answers.
And not to, not to, not to cut you off, but the responses will be actual responses? Because we did put quite a few questions in the chat that are just being deferred. So the community would like to get responses, not deferred.
What we were saying is they're not deferred, we believe that some of the questions, a good portion of them, will be answered during this public hearing with the statements that we're going to be making. Obviously, if any of them haven't been, then we will, you know, like I said, we'll do what we can to get the answers as soon as quickly as possible. But a lot of the questions that are being asked are actually being addressed in the tentative determination that Ms. Nash is going to be reading into the public record. It's also, as Ms. Sarasak said, in the docket right now, they can be, you know, the tentative determination, the fact sheet can be reviewed, and more questions, feel free to send them in. And then, and again, just for what we're moving into as part of the public hearing formal testimony, questions that are raised during formal testimony will be addressed at the end of the comment period because it goes till July 29th, we have a lot of time and I expect a lot of comments. I expect people to amend their statements. We will address everything at the end of the comment period, which is July 29th. That was an extension that was already requested in writing, a 60-day extension. So at that point, all the questions, as I said, will be, and all the comments, I should say, will be reviewed and addressed, and this document of the response to comments will be sent to everybody. And I'll be adding it to the docket as well for people to review.
That's fine, and then just, I just do want to stress the point on behalf of our neighborhood that we have a lot of infants, a lot of toddlers, and a lot of elderly here. So any chemicals that are released into the air will impact us, and we will be the guinea pigs, and we will be the ones, our kids will be the ones living with any harmful health effects that will happen in the next five, 10, 15, 20 years, you name it. So that needs to be, considering that's something that we would like to know, how that is being addressed.
Right, yeah, Miss Hassan, if you want to, when we open it, once we finish the hearing portion, we'll open it up for that comment, if you want to make that comment again for the record, we'll definitely respond to it, we're responding to everything. Like I said, this meeting is going to be recorded, we'll go through it all, look at all the questions, make sure we address everybody's comments and concerns. Just for the sake of time, we're just trying, trying to get through the hearing portion of it, but you guys have plenty of opportunities to ask us questions and submit comments. So let's go through the public hearing statement, and then you guys can make more public comments for the record, and let's see if we can move on from there.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so as I was saying, so my name is Shannon Heffey, oh, I just put myself on mute, didn't I? Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, you're not on mute.
Okay, I keep hitting my button. So, and one more time, I'll just read it because it was interrupted. My name is Shannon Heffey, I'm the Air Quality Permits Program Public Participation Coordinator for the Department of the Environment. I am going to be serving as the hearing officer this evening. Other members of the Air Quality Permits Program of the Maryland Department of the Environment are Ms. Sunny Sarasak, the manager of the Air Quality Permits Program, Mr. Matt Hafner, chief of the Chemical and Mineral Division, and Ms. Susan Nash, the senior permit engineer assigned to review the application and draft the air quality permit. WR Grace is being represented by Mr. Bob Riley, director of sustainability, and Mr. Rob Harding, senior technology advisor of Marketing Partners. This public hearing is for an air quality permit application submitted by WR Grace for the installation of a research-scale pilot plant, including small reactors, chillers, separators, feeders, and samplers, with an exhaust gas stream cleaned by an electric flameless thermal oxidizer. The installation would be located at their Columbia facility. Notification of this hearing appeared in the Howard County Times on April 11th and April 18th, 2024. A docket of information and the tentative determination and draft permit conditions is available on the MDE website. Again, we will show that to you before the end of the evening. And at the conclusion of the comment period, all the comments received, as we were saying, will be addressed, reviewed and addressed in a response to comments document. So everyone will see what was raised, the questions, concerns, and what the answers are. Pardon me. If the department does not receive any comments, it considers to be adverse to the tentative determination, I will, can you folks mute yourselves, please? Thank you. If the department does not receive any comments, it considers to be adverse to the tentative determination, that determination will become the final decision at the end of the comment period. If the department does receive comments, it deems adverse to the tentative determination. It'll make a final review and determination whether to issue or deny the permit. A notice of final determination will be placed in the legal section of a newspaper of general circulation in the area, which is probably going to be the Howard County Times again. It'll be placed on the MDE air quality permitting webpage, which is again, under that, under the opportunity for meetings and hearings and scheduled meetings and hearings, there is a section for final determination, it would be posted there. And it'll be mailed or emailed to the commenters and those who participated in the public review process for the application. And again, if you received the link to this meeting through somebody else, please make sure that you email me your contact information so that I can get you the information of the results of this hearing, the questions, concerns, make sure you all receive everything you need. So at the end of all of this, if any person is contending that they will be adversely affected by the department's final determination, may seek remedy within the circuit court system of Maryland. A petition for judicial review must be filed with the circuit court county, excuse me, circuit of the county, in this case Howard County, within 30 days of the, after the publication of a notice of final determination. So Ms. Nash will give a brief statement about the tentative determination, the permit and the fact sheet, and then comments will be, comments for the record will be invited. And again, as we said, any, any questions posed as testimony will be addressed at the end of the comment period. We should hopefully have some time at the end of the comment, I mean, excuse me, at the end of the hearing tonight to address a few more questions informally. But you will have until July 29th to submit formal comments or amend a statement you might make tonight. So plenty of time, plenty. So I'm going to say to Ms. Nash, if you would like to make your statement, please, and then I can, why don't we release the information via county website? I can ask. The information will be sent to the elected officials, but I can certainly request that they add it to their information for Howard County. So, okay, so I'm sorry. Let Ms. Nash read her statement into the record, and then we will call on our elected officials and then the general public to make their formal comments. So Ms. Nash?
Good evening. My name is Susan Nash, and I am the Air Quality Permit Engineer assigned to review the application and draft the permit for the proposed project. The Maryland Department of the Environment has reviewed the application submitted by WR Grace for an air quality permit to construct that would authorize the installation of a new pilot plant line. The proposed installation will be located at 7500 Grace Drive, Columbia, Maryland, 21044 in Howard County. WR Grace currently operates a research facility at this location. Grace proposes to install one new pilot plant line to process one kilogram per hour of commercially available plastic feedstock. Plastic feedstock and catalyst will be fed to a reaction system. The reactor will vent product vapor to a product recovery system, where condensable vapor will be removed and sent to storage as the liquid product. Liquid product will be stored temporarily in drums before being sent to a third-party environmental facility for treatment. Non-condensable vapor from the product recovery system will go to an electric flameless thermal oxidizer. The thermal oxidizer has a stack that vents to atmosphere. Spent catalyst will be transferred to the regeneration system, where excess hot air will completely oxidize any coke that's built up on the catalyst. Regenerated catalyst will be circulated back into the reaction system. The regeneration system has a stack that vents to atmosphere. The steam generation system supplying steam to the reaction system is powered by electricity. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, powered by electricity. The department's review process included determinations of worst-case air emissions from the proposed installation and determinations of the impact of those emissions on ambient air quality. Emissions from the proposed research pilot plant line were calculated based on lab test results, published technical papers, data from operating plants at other locations, and engineering estimates. Details concerning the facility's emissions and their impact on ambient air quality are provided in the department's tentative determination, which is included in the docket that has been made available for public review. Based on the findings and determinations following the review of the information provided with the application, the proposed facility can be expected to comply with all applicable air pollution control regulations. Therefore, the department has made a tentative determination that the permit to construct with enforceable conditions can be issued. So did you have my slide?
Sorry, I'm trying to share it, it just gave me an error, hang on one second. Is it coming up now?
Yeah, it is.
In order to ensure consistent compliance with air pollution control requirements, WR Grace will be required to do all the following. First, operate in compliance with all applicable federal and state air quality regulation. Second, operate so as to prevent discharge of emissions that create a nuisance beyond the property line. Third, operate with a limit on average throughput of one kilogram per hour daily and 4,000 kilograms per year of plastic feedstock. They must, fourth, they must power all equipment with electricity. Fifth, control emissions from the product recovery system with an electric flameless thermal oxidizer. And number six, implement good operating practices designed to minimize emissions of VOC. That concludes my statement.
Okay, I'm going to leave these permit requirements, this is a summary of what's included. The full draft permit is in our docket that's available online on our website, along with a tentative determination fact sheet that has much more detailed information about the total emissions from this proposed installation, and whether they comply with air quality requirements and what we look for as far as whether we determine if we can issue this permit or not. So this is a draft permit, this is available for public comment. We do have a question about where the recording will be available. It looks like Dr. Wu is live broadcasting it, but also we are recording this. Unfortunately, it takes about 24 hours for Google Meet to process the video, and then it's too large to share. So then I have to ask our IT department to create a link, it'll probably be a YouTube link, and we'll send it to interested parties. So if you register through the Google form, you will receive it. That includes all elected officials and all the interested parties registered through Google form. You feel free to pass it on to your neighbors who were not able to attend or who didn't register ahead of time. And then also, if you want to be on this list, actually, let me just post this now. This, and I'm going to leave this up to the entirety of this, the rest of this hearing. This is Shannon Heffey's contact information. This is Shannon Heefy's contact information. She is our Maryland Department of the Environment, Air Quality Permits Program, Public Participation Coordinator. We'd like all the information to go to Shannon so that she can collect it all and keep it in one place rather than something coming to me, coming to Susan, going to Matt. So, please email her, shannon.heafeymarilyn.gov. There's also a phone number if you'd like to call her. We're collecting comments until July 29. All of our information will remain on our website, so you can always look for that information, generate questions, email Shannon, and we'll be accepting comments and questions through July 29.
Thank you, Shannon. Okay, so I am going to open the floor, and I'm going to go through our elected officials again to offer them first opportunities to make a comment. So, pardon me. I'm going to start with Eric Benner for Senator Gazzoni. And again, if you don't want to make a statement this evening, you can just say "pass" and send something in writing to me after tonight, no problem. It does have to be in writing. That's the only thing. So, unless... Although this is being recorded here tonight, it will be in writing with the court reporters' report. Report. Sorry. So, Mr. Benner?
Pass for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Delegate Teresa? Nope. Okay. Brooks, are you available if you want to make a statement? Okay. This'll be all right. And Dr. Wu, do you have a statement you'd like to make for the record tonight?
Sure, sure. Thank you, Ms. Heefy. I really appreciate the opportunity. I think through the conversation earlier, we can understand the concern for a lot of neighborhood residents because of health concern. I think the independent evaluation of the report will be important to really build that confidence and trust from residents. Hopefully, with the release of that independent assessment, that will help people understand the evaluation part. And then, there are a lot of different questions. I hope eventually your department will be able to answer that and build that trust and understanding for our residents. Make sure health is something critically important. At the same time, urgency... Emergency plan will be important in case something breaks down. I think that's two part. I hope you can focus on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Delegate John? Oh, excuse me, Councilmember John?
Hi, I am still here. I do want to say to my neighbors, particularly to Ayesha Hassan, who indicated a great concern being in the neighborhood right next door to Grace, that I am more than happy to meet with you at any point regarding this air quality permit and to help you get the information that you need if you don't feel like you've gotten it tonight. So, I think that's important for you to know that you have an advocate here on the county council, and I am hopeful that we will continue to get as much good information in the next couple of months as we did tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And Delegate Gazzon, do you have a statement you'd like to make for this evening?
Yes, thank you. And sorry about my earlier microphone challenges. Most I would like to thank both MDE and Grace for all of the time that they've put in this evening in answering all of the questions that were brought up earlier. And I look forward to continuing to follow along with how this process goes. And of course, if anyone is looking to reach out to one of their delegates for assistance, either myself or Jennifer Tarasa are happy to help you out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Shannon, how would you like to take comments? Would you want everyone to put them in the chat box? Or would you prefer they raise their hand or...?
Well, I'll call on the raise hands in just a second. There's one comment in the chat box, so I'm going to... I believe there's one comment. I'm going to read it so that the court reporter can enter it as a comment for the record. It's from Michael Kois, K-R-O-I-S-S. I asked the following question in informational session chat. As part of this research, you will be considering plastics that are classified as PFAS from rubber chemicals. What monitoring will you have in place specifically for PFAS emissions? There was a lot of "should" in Grace's answer in the informational session regarding how those PFAS emissions would not enter the atmosphere. As this is research experimental, as stated in the information, there is no certainty. There are no EPA standards for air quality as it relates to PFAS, so there's no standard for UBS. The EPA recently passed PFAS standards for water quality. Why would we allow this today when we can't measure what is regarded by the EPA in the following manner? Quote, "Exposure to certain PFAS may lead to adverse health outcomes." End quote. The EPA notes reproductive developmental increased cancer risk amongst others. Even the potential of an increased level of PFAS means there is no place for this in our densely populated community. And then, there's another comment here. I guess, at some point, Deborah Grace, Bob, you said there were cons, so you should like to hear what those cons are. So, we'll reach out to you on that after the hearing. And then, we'd like to know if the emissions have been verified by a third party not paid by Grace. We know... And this is Anwar Hassan, A-N-W-E-R-H-A-S-A-N. I'm sorry, I'm spelling all this out for the court reporter. We would like to know if the emissions have been verified by a third party not paid by Grace. We know MDE is stressed with resources and like to know how they have evaluated the emissions, the duration of pilot tests, and no other test will be performed at this facility if approved. Okay, so that's all that's in the chat. So, we have a couple of hands raised. We have Ayesha Hassan. If you want to go ahead and unmute yourself?
Yeah, can you hear me? Yep. Yep, this is Ayesha. I am unclear what the earlier part of this meeting was, but I will reiterate what I had started saying before, before I was kicked out or cut out of the meeting. I wanted to just speak on behalf of the residents who are living in Cedar Creek neighborhood, which is yards away from Building 30, where Grace is proposing to have this research and development project. And wanted to just stress that we have a lot of infants, toddlers, and elderly who live in this neighborhood. I think when we all purchased our homes here, we were told by the sales folks that R&amp;D projects would not continue beyond what is existing. So, it is, of course, disheartening to hear about this project and the chemicals that are going to be released into the air and the water. I know a lot of folks have already stressed that, so just wanted to put a finer touch on that. And then, we have a slate of questions we would like to know. Following on Sarah's comment, what are the cons of this project? We talked a lot about what should happen. What happens when these things may fail? Because research and development projects, we know that there are things that may happen. So, how are we... What's our Plan B, Plan C, Plan D? And for example, especially with the cleaning valve, if that mechanism fails, how will Grace be alerted that that has failed? How will the community, especially our neighborhood, which is directly yards behind Grace, know that that has failed and our water is impacted and our air quality is impacted? And then, what are the total emissions of the CO2 and the other chemicals that are going to be released for all of Grace's projects, including this R&amp;D project? And then, additionally, wanted to learn a little bit more about Grace, with the frequency with which Grace is... Their cleaning valve is going to be checked by our local and our state authorities to ensure that it is working properly, to ensure that if things are going wrong, that that project is stopped so that our, again, our kids are not impacted by this, right? There's a reason why we all moved to Columbia, Maryland, one of the best places to live in this country. And this is not what we had expected when we purchased a home here. And I'm speaking on behalf of many of our residents at court in this neighborhood. And then, how frequently is the surrounding air sampled by the county and the local or by a third party, not by Grace's folks, to ensure that the chemicals released are not toxic to the residents who live a few yards from Grace? And then, what is the threshold at which the sample would be considered a violation? And then, what happens if that sample comes back and it is at a higher level? What are the mechanisms there? How are we, the public, going to be made aware? And I do want to put a finer touch that it seems like a newspaper had included the information for this hearing. We only found out a few days ago about this hearing. And we're a couple of yards away from Grace, and this is "we," the neighborhood. So, what is the communication process going to be there? Because, again, a lot of folks in the community did not hear about this. A lot of were not even able to register for this hearing and to listen to this public hearing. So, what is the communication mechanism going to be? Because if something does go wrong, we're the guinea pigs, right? Our neighborhood is going to be the guinea pigs. Our kids are most likely, our infants and toddlers and our elderly are most likely going to have the harmful impacts. So, we have residents who are immunocompromised. So, we want to learn a little bit more about what is that process of keeping us safe, especially our health, our water, our air? And then, what is the process if something does go wrong? Because this is a research and development project. We're humans, they're machines, things may go wrong. What is going to happen? What's the plan be? How are you going to maintain our safety? And then, how are we going to be notified if things have gone wrong? And that there may be... What are we supposed to do for that? So, I just want to put those on the record. And then, Susan, I think that I'm supposed to email Susan these questions as well. So, I will gather them up from our neighborhood and make sure that we put it in an email. But we would like these answers responded because it has felt like in the previous information session or earlier part of this meeting that it was just going to be different. And we did not... We have not heard of responses. It's just, you know, Grace should be doing this for this project. This should happen. What happens if that does not happen? And then, what are the impacts that we've already discussed? So, we would like actual, you know, concrete answers, please. Thank you.
And Ayesha, just before we move on to the next person, which... What neighborhood... What was the name of your neighborhood?
We are in Cedar Creek, which is a few yards from Building 30. Grace, so the project that this is going... This plastic project, R&amp;D, is going to be in Building 30. We are at that black fence right behind, so we are a few yards. So, like, anything that comes out of Grace will go into our neighborhood. There is 100% chance of that. So, we are all incredibly concerned. And Deb, I did want to... Thank you, Deb, for your comment. I truly appreciate that. And I know that a lot of our neighbors would like to speak with you. So, Deb, I'm not sure how to facilitate that, but would love to set up a meeting with you in our neighborhood if that's possible, if you're still on, Deb.
That'd be great. Ms. Hassan, I'm going to try to find out how to best reach your community. It may be if you have a community association, I will try to reach out that way. But if you could be so kind as to email me tomorrow and make sure that I have your information, that would be wonderful.
And just to clarify, it's not Susan, it's Shannon Heefy.
Yeah.
Her email... I don't know if you can see that on screen. Shannon Heefy@marilyn.gov. Okay, yeah, that's who you want to send all the information. Everybody, anybody, questions, add it to the list. Add more people to the list. That's where you want it to go because she's going to collect all the information. We don't want it to go to separate emails. We want it all to go to Shannon. She's going to manage all of that. Okay, so we have a couple more hands raised. I think it's Sharon Boyes. Is that how it's pronounced? Did you have a comment?
Yes, hello. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Sharon Boyes, and I'm representing Protect Our Streams this evening. Thank you for this opportunity, and thank you for arranging the informational meeting prior to tonight's hearing. There's no doubt about the tremendous negative impacts associated with plastics from their production and harmful contents. So, where even just a single piece of plastic winds up? Waiting for time and the elements to break it down into countless bits. With so many of these bits ending up in our waterways and sources of clean drinking water, we know these bits never really go away. They just go elsewhere. Hyperplastics are even in our bodies. So, when we hear about air pollutants from plastics, it's concerning. If it were possible to convert pellets made from used plastic water bottles and other recyclables, meat trays, packaging, medical trash, PVC pipes, containers for fluids, coating for cables, Styrofoam peanuts, and egg cartons, just some of the materials that are produced from the various types of plastics described in the proposal into a new source of energy or into a form that we could essentially make go away or it turns into bits, that could potentially be worth exploring. But at what cost to the surrounding environment and people's health near the location that this work will be performed in? I want to remind everyone that we live here. I was taught as a very small child that we should never burn plastics. I have many questions. Some have been answered tonight. Why here? Why not at a Superfund site, a Coca-Cola bottling facility for plastics manufacture? Does this location, facility, and this building all have the current and proper air? Solid waste, hazardous waste, R&amp;D, manufacturing permits, and proper zoning from planning and zoning required for this type of activity? How long is the pilot project going to last? It's successful with the hope before processing plant here in Columbia. Do any local village and elected representatives question the environmental justice score provided by the applicant regarding the minority population, poverty rate, and limited English proficiency? We know a final byproduct will be vented to the atmosphere, and the separated condensed liquid will be collected and transferred daily to 55-gallon drums in the warehouse and ultimately shipped to a third-party waste treatment facility. What size-scale project are you talking about here? Is it just one 55-gallon drum or 10 drums a day or even more? Are any of the products or processes flammable or combustible? Could any step along the way cause an explosion or fire and toxic release? Where would the plastic pellets be coming from? And where is the waste treatment facility located? How many loads a day in and out are you anticipating? What if the pellets being transported to the facility or waste being hauled away is involved in an accident? Would it have to be required for cleanup? How big are the pellets? Are the byproducts hazardous materials? What are the expected environmental harms if this were to occur? How would any of this be removed from a waterway? Will there be any wastewater involved in the entire process? And if so, what is the process for its treatment and disposal? Who provided the emissions point data? What standard was used for estimating the data? Although the levels of emissions proposed to be released seem to be negligible, we know that toxics add up. We don't know how those emission levels compare to acceptable or other activities. What are the known cumulative impacts from these emissions on human health and the environment, including our drinking water and the air we breathe? Would MDE have the authority to shut the project down? Another concern is a review of the reporting, the toxic releases inventory to the EPA. It seems there hasn't been a data reported since 2010 that I can find, but they are proposing to add to the toxics that will be released, which they would need to include in these reports. So, how much more will this add to any ongoing situation? TRI reporting and compliance is essential, and I would like to request that all reporting be brought up to date or reviewed before this application is taken into further consideration for approval. I also request that reporting requirements to TRI in the past, ongoing, and in the future be identified before any applications or projects are taken into further consideration. A new NASA air pollution monitoring tool shows that Howard County has some of the dirtiest air in Maryland. We continue to challenge or mature to release the air filters down. I've attached a link to the NASA tool with my comments that I'll be submitting. Will this project contribute to the dirty air? Thanks again for this opportunity. Please remember that we live here. Thank you for consideration of our health and our environmental concerns before you approve the application.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Thank you for that very thoughtful statement. And we appreciate all of those questions. We have... I can't see the full name here. I don't know if it's... First name, Golash?
Yeah, Golash Adade.
Okay, yes, Adade. Please, if you have any comments for the record?
Yes. So, I live in the Cedar Creek Development. I moved in about two years ago, and the first night, I couldn't sleep at all because my window is next to your office. I mean, you know, there's a forest between us. But the noise that was coming from Grace was so loud that I initially made a contact with... In fact, I was looking for my emails from 2022. I'm not fond of it yet, but I've been in contact with Grace for all these years. And what they have done so far was to lower the noise level. They told me that there was some... One of the machines was attaining. That has gone down a little bit. But unfortunately, I have a friend who used to work for Grace. And when I told him, when I told her that I moved to this address, he laughed. She laughed and told me that she would never live near Grace. And I asked her why. And then, you know, she giggled and never answered me. So, I know that back in the 1970s, there was a big issue with Grace. They polluted some waters in Virginia, in Richmond. So, Grace is known for polluting the air, the water, and everything that they can in the name of research. Now, the question is, what criteria would the government accept to not approve this permit? I mean, this permit. I'd like to know what criteria would the government use to not approve this permit? Because you can't trust, you know... After they get a permit, I don't think the government is going to be around 24/7, you know, to monitor the air. I don't think that's going to happen. You know, I work for DHS, so we monitor all the air around, you know, big events. You know, I mean, I know how it works. I mean, I know how it works. So I'm very nervous, you know, my window, I can't even open my window. And I've never opened my window since I moved in here. Because I, I never trust whatever is coming, the pollution that's coming from Grace. It blows towards our, you know, to community. And now you're going to add something else to the air. I think, you know, they should not approve this permit. That's my comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great, thanks. There are a couple more comments in the chat that I'm going to go ahead and read out. Paul Tiscano says, what are the chemicals used and the potential byproducts? What are the risks associated to those chemicals? In worst-case scenarios, how will Grace and MDE respond to disaster scenarios? Excuse me, I'm sorry. And then underwater ops just did, did confirm the community is also represented by the Village of River Hill homeowners association. You can contact Renee Dubois, village manager, regarding provision of further information. I can attest, I am a resident of River Hill. And I did receive the emails because I'm on the River Hill email contact list. So I did receive emails to register for this meeting and hearing. So if you contact Renee Dubois, she might be able to add you if you did not get emails regarding the notice of this hearing. We were, it was requested by one of the village managers, the hearing by itself, and they disseminated the information. We also sent it to all elected officials in the area and also elected officials within one mile. River Hill is not actually in the district where Grace is located, but it is right next to it. So that's why all of you were notified. And then it does, I think, Ayesha, you have your hand up, but I don't know if that's from the original comment or if you had an additional comment.
Yeah, just one more common question, actually. Hopefully it can be answered because the other ones haven't been answered yet. I, I don't know if this is just questions and at some point we're going to get responses. But what's the timeline for, you know, if this does go forward, when will Grace start actually doing the chemicals that would impact our health?
So I can just informally answer that, but we'll also send a formal response as well in the formal response to comment. Comments are due through July twenty-ninth. So this is a pre-construction permit. W R Grace is not allowed to install anything related to this pilot plant until it comes to ship is issued. So comment, comments are due through July twenty-ninth. And then the department will be preparing a response to the comments document and then making a final determination based on all the comments received, whether a permit can be issued at that time. It, it's still open for judicial review. I guess Shannon, you can probably review the whole judicial review process too. If the department determines after responding to all the comments that the permit can still be issued, there's still some other legal recourse following the issuance of the permit.
So if it is, if the permit does go through, like what are we looking at, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six?
Well, I, I know that it was going to take some time to go through. These are wonderful questions and very in-depth and that's, that's awesome. So I know that it's going to take some time to go through those. So we're looking September, October, maybe, maybe even a little bit later, depending on how, how much we have to research to get all the answers. But you guys will definitely be notified as we're, you know, when, when we're getting those, the, the comments sent out. But in the meantime, send me, again, anyone can send me a quick note with a question and I can try to get it answered now before the end of the comment period. And, and then if you want to adjust your statement, you could add to it based on whatever answers we can get for you. If that works. I don't know how long.
Did you say, did you say September, October twenty twenty-four is what Grace is looking at if everything goes smoothly?
No, 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 no. That would be how long it may take us or a little bit longer to review all of the questions that are coming in and produce the answers. So yeah, no, I, I don't, I mean, they, Grace can't start anything without this permit being issued. So nothing's going to be starting up until we're at the end of this process. So.
Yeah, just, just for the residents, what, what are we looking at, twenty twenty-five? Like if everything goes well, when, when would that?
So we can't answer for Grace's part, their, their installation. You know, they, all we know is that they can't install anything. That's really just part of the project until this permit is issued, if it's issued. We're still in the draft phase. So, yeah. So we're still taking comment through July twenty-ninth. And then given just the, the, you know, public comments that we've received so far, we're expecting a lot more comments. It's going to take the department quite some time to sift through all the comments to make sure that we address everything correctly and then make a final determination, determination as to whether this permit can be issued.
Okay, and then last question?
Yeah.
I was just saying, last question, sorry, and then we'll, we'll yield my time. I wanted to learn a little bit more about the dispersion, dispersion sphere of the pollution. How far in the atmosphere will it spread? You know, has there modeling been done? And then we would, I think the residents of this community, Cedar Creek, who are again, yards away from building thirty where Grace was going to put out this R and D project, we would like to know how far in the atmosphere it will spread. So has modeling been done and can we get the results?
And we'll definitely prepare responses to those as well, to those questions. Make sure that you get the accurate responses once we receive all of the comments. We do have another quest, comment in the chat. Phyllis Kelly, K E L L E Y, just spelling this out for the quote unquote order to make sure that they get these reported. I applaud W R Grace's efforts at sustainability. But the middle of River Hill and Appleton neighborhoods is not the best place for this R and D, given the exhaustive CO2 VOCs and butadiene. In addition to liquid hazardous waste temporary storage, this can only have a negative effect on our family's health. And then they'd like to, and also someone wanted to know why Cedar Creek residents weren't directly notified of the project.
Actually, we do have someone who registered from Cedar Creek. I just looked it up. So some information was sent out somewhere. But maybe we can talk afterward about who we can add. Well, obviously you're on this list now, but if there's other people you would like to have added from the Cedar Creek area, please contact me and we'll make sure we get them done. I'm not sure why some did and some didn't receive it. But we'll do weekend and make sure everyone gets it. So. So I had a question. There were, you were reading something several people back. And you did not spell the person's name and I'm so sorry, but I want to make sure that we got it.
Was it the comment from Paul Tiscano?
It might have been. Yeah, I think that's one.
Comment is T U S C A N O, first name Paul. What are the chemicals used and the potential byproducts? What are the risks associated to those chemicals in worst-case scenario? How will Grace and MDE respond to disaster scenarios?
Yep. Thank you. Okay, well, would anyone else have, or would like to raise their hand and make a statement for the record tonight? Okay, we have Ayesha and Joel. Okay. Sana, can you address or open those up?
Well, no, they can unmute themselves. Go ahead. Ayesha?
I don't have anything else.
Oh, okay.
On grace.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Joel, you have a, you have a comment?
Yes. As I put in the informal part of the meeting, I'd like clarification on page forty-seven of the docket and first of the premises regarding the test polymerization process from twenty fourteen, that permit with the number that's there and the test gas phase polymerization process from twenty seventeen, also with a permit number. Are those building thirty or are they somewhere else on the Grace property? Put in context the history and what's going on. Also, as a prerequisite for the application for the zoning approval from the county, I'd like clarification at the September first six twenty twenty-three letter from Mike Cell. Is that submitted as a letter? Because in, absence of the attachment, it refers to this office, which would be Grace, we would be Grace and our records, which would be Grace. But all that language was parroted in the approval letter from Howard County Department of Planning and Zoning. And the office became DPZ and Howard County. And because they did not ask, well, you asked, had a conditional use, but there is really no conditional use required for this type of thing in a PEC zone. But they didn't mention the non-conforming use. So our county didn't therefore put it in their letter. So my clarification of how Howard County's letter basically is what Grace asked for, word for word.
All right, thank you for that. Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Okay, we have more raised hands. Eric B.
So this is Eric from Senator Zoni's office. I did pass earlier during the legislator section, I did want to say I don't have a comment, but I will part the information back to the center for this meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. And there was somebody else, wasn't there?
Yes. It's CB on a secret. I apologize if I'm not pronouncing that correctly, but do you have your hand raised? You can unmute yourself.
Yeah, thanks for letting me speak. So just like Ayesha said, and I think, oh, I speak for a lot of the Cedar, Cedar Crest residents, we were not notified. The fact that we found out about this meeting was through a Facebook page from a notification that the residents at River Hill received. So that's, let's just make that clear. I think just like Ayesha mentioned, we are all not in support of this permit. But we, and I, and I think, I think that's very clear. What I, what I would like for someone to just explain to everyone on this call is, given all these concerns, who are the voting members and who gets a say if this permit is approved? Thanks.
Thank you. And I thought there was somebody else.
I don't think there's any more hands raised. There is. It says you'll be reviewing the comments until July. What is this process? Okay, you know, this is Shannon's contact information, so please take this down. You can email Shannon and I'm going to take this down because I'm going to show you guys the rest of the process. So you guys can understand where we are. Okay, so we did have an informal session because like I said, back in December, we offered an opportunity for the public to request an informational meeting. And it wasn't requested, but then when the opportunity for hearing came out on the draft permit, we did receive requests for hearings and a request for another informal session, which is why we started with an informal session before the public hearing on the draft permit. So then we had the public hearing. Here are the steps of our public review process. First step is the informational meeting. Again, there was an opportunity and I, I regret that, you know, our legal requirements are to post it in the newspaper. We also posted on our website, but we also notify all elected officials and elected officials located within one mile. I know it was probably over the holidays when this happened. And it was, most of the time that, that people see these notices, it's through their elected officials and, and reach out through that. Unfortunately, we're, the department doesn't have lists of all the different communities that are impacted. So that's sometimes what happens during that part. But however, we did go out for, we, after, so when there was no request for an informational meeting, there was a technical review of application conducted and the department reached a technical determination that the permit could be issued. And this is where we are here, step four. So we're giving you the opportunity to request a public hearing. Somebody requested it. Somebody else requested an informational meeting. Someone else requested a sixty-day extension. So that's why you have until July twenty-nine. We're actually extending it beyond that, you know, beyond sixty days. So you have until July twenty-nine to submit comments on what you see. And then you can also ask questions during that time. So this is where we are. Following the comment period, there is a final determination. So if adverse comments are received, as we've received this evening or in writing during the entire comment period, you know, the department will pay a formal response to comments and then we'll make a final determination at that time whether the permit can be issued. If a permit is determined that it can be issued or the department determines a permit can be issued, a final determination by the department on the issuance, and I think Shannon will probably repeat this at the end again too, at the end of this hearing, is substitute judicial review. And if you participated in this public participation process and you submitted comments, you would have standing to be able to request petition for judicial review that's filed in the separate court for the county. But we'll send you all of that information. Anybody that's attending this meeting, we're going to try and report all the information. You know, I, I just realized, Shannon, I didn't ask anybody who had phone calls, but we had so many, so many comments from people who joined in from the, the Google meet. So I apologize if you have, if you're on the phone and you do have questions or comments, please, please, please email Shannon. It's S H A N N O N dot heepee, H E A, F E Y at Maryland, the entire word spelled out, dot G O V. We have a couple more hands raised? So, let's see. Okay, Lily Weiss-Laura. Can I unmute yourself? Are you able to unmute yourself?
We can come back to her.
Yeah, we'll come back to Lily. There's Ayesha again. You had your hands put in, right?
Yep, thank you. So we would just want to know, what is the process for getting the permit not accepted? Sounds like MDE is still in the process of accepting or denying this permit to Grace. We would like to know at Cedar Creek, what exactly is the process? How many statements do you need from neighbors, from residents of Howard County saying that we do not, we are not supportive of this permit? And then what is the process and by which state do you need it and where do you need it? Do I, do we need to get signatures and give them to Shannon? Is there another process? I would like to know how many signatures you need or how many folks you need to sign statements saying we are not supportive of this permit and we are not supportive of this R and D project. And then what is the process of giving that? Do we need to give it to Shannon, to somebody else? Please explain that process thoroughly because we are, a lot of us are very confused as to what exactly is the process in the top four there.
Okay, so this is an air quality permit to construct. So we have to, we have to demonstrate that this project can meet all applicable air quality regulations and that's the basis of the permit. So whether it has a hundred people interested in it or not interested or do not want it built, if it meets all applicable air quality regulations, there isn't, I mean, I think you would probably want to ask questions from a technical perspective, you know, in, in order to get some of that answered, some of those questions answered for you, if that makes any sense.
We just want to know like what, as residents of Howard County, especially those who are living yards from Cedar Creek, from Grace, what, what can we do and what do we need to do in order to have this permit not moving forward?
So the tentative determination that's in, in the docket describes the department's procedure and it describes what we are allowed under our authority to review and issue this air quality permit. And so hopefully we can find some information in there that you might find helpful. But if you have questions, please submit those to Shannon.
That, that didn't answer my question though, you know.
You, you're asking about the procedure to have this not issued? The, the correct steps that would be taken with MDE is making sure that what the proposal as applied for will meet the air quality standards and has zoning. The, it has zoning or we wouldn't even be able to touch this. And according to what we have in the modeling and all the research that Susan has done for this draft permit, it will, it, it looks like it will meet the requirements. Now, if during this final determination, while we're reviewing everyone's questions and concerns, if something were to come up that we were unaware of, that would put them in a position where they couldn't meet this, the, the requirements for this application, we would want to hear that and that would be one of the things that would have to be discussed before we do do a final determination. So you are absolutely welcome to send me, you know, statements that say you are against it. I saw a lot of people in the, in the chat just opened up saying that they were not in favor of it. If you all would do me a favor, please send that to me in writing. So I have a record, an email record that you said, that you are opposed to this. All of this goes into the formal record and I would love to have you guys get everything to me that you want to say not just in the chat box. I'd really like to have it in writing with my email so I can keep those records rolling. But for right now, we still are just going to go through all the comments, the concerns, the, the items that were raised to find out if our, our tentative determination will meet, that will actually meet the final determination, yes or no. So that's, again, we're just in the, the beginning of that part of it. And hopefully between now and July twenty-ninth, we'll get enough answers and questions that will satisfy some people's concerns or at least acknowledge that their questions were sent into us and that we can, you know, try to get answers. If we don't have an answer, we will ask Grace to provide an answer for us. If it's very much so outside of the purview, say there was a question about water runoff or something, we would ask the other administrations to give us some answers to work with. Because obviously something like water runoff would be outside the purview of an air permit. But we will, we do. But we will, we do try to get as many answers as absolutely possible. Everything does get reviewed. So, um, just for the, again, for the record, everyone who's putting in the chat box, if they don't agree, um, please send it to me in writing. Um, that way I can make sure it gets included with the permanent record. And I do appreciate that you're putting these things in the chat box, but I do need to have them in writing.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I don't know if the court reporter is, can record from the chat box or not, or if I-
I don't think so. That's, yeah.
So Shannon, so, so I'll make sure that I'm understanding correctly. So we will, we will send emails. Um, our neighborhood, and I'm assuming other neighborhoods as well, will send you those emails. Um, to what extent do our, do our voices matter, and are we gonna be heard? Right, we are Howard County residents. We purchased this land. We pay incredibly exorbitant property taxes and taxes for the county, for the state. Um, and it just feels quite unfair that we were misled to purchase homes here, and then now there's gonna be this, uh, chemical research and development where we are gonna be the guinea pigs. And so what is our power as, as constituents of this county to be able to stop it? It sounds like we will, we'll send you emails with the, saying we are not supportive of that.
Ayesha, this is Lily Weiss. I wanted to, um, say something before this, uh, neighborhood was built. We had an issue with Grace, uh, they were going to put a, a cellular tower very close to where those, um, houses now they're built. And we had a petition from River Hill over 100 signatures in order for Grace not to put a cellular tower where, where it was supposed to be. And they actually, we compromised, and they built it on the other side of where your neighborhood is. So what I, what we did is we got our petition, went door to door, getting signatures, and that is how it works this, this time. I will be able to do that from River Hill, and you can do the same thing from your neighborhood, because this should not happen again.
It should not. You're, you're absolutely right, Lily. And when you say door to door, is that emailed? I just wanna make sure, Shannon, that we are tracking, actually. Do we need emails, or what is the process?
I'll, I'll send you the petition, and we're gonna work door to door, get the petition, signature, uh, address, phone numbers, so that can count when we go to the county. And have that, uh, either relocate, either move somewhere else. I don't know, they must have a plan B, just in case this doesn't happen. They have to.
Okay, um, so I know our officials on the line as well, so, um, for the county officials also, uh, what is the process? Is it just emails, or do we need to give you, like, give, submit to Maryland Department of Environment, um, a petition with, with what signatures? I just am unclear as to what is the process to make sure our voices are heard. I don't want it to be, we spent all this time, we got all this emails, and then they're just discarded because they didn't follow some, some protocol.
Shannon, there's no, there's no protocol other than submitting your comments to Shannon and via email during the comment period, and we will work to address all of those comments. Uh, there's no process, there's no format. Um, if we receive a large number of them, that's also noted as well.
What about petitions? How many petitions do you need in order to actually get a plan?
We don't, we don't have a number of petitions. That's not in our regulation as far as, yeah, yeah. So it, you know, we don't, we do know that there's a lot of public concern already, uh, we're already receiving comments, but just submitting the number of comments that you submit to Shannon, uh, will indicate that there's, there's intense public interest in this project. Um, I think, uh, we have, uh, one, two, three, four more comments, and then, like I said, the public comment period is open through July 29. Please peruse this information, ask your questions later, submit your comments in writing to Shannon. Um, this, this is not a closed process right now, so we're just gonna answer these last four. Galash Adade, if you, if you wanna go ahead and unmute yourself?
Yes.
And then, and we are gonna copy the chat, because I can't read all of these chat comments right now for the court reporter, but I'm having that copied so that we have those, these comments as well for the rest of it.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, so my question is, um, in your speech, uh, somewhere you say that technically, they have approved, um, I mean, the draft for the, for the permit. What technical, uh, criteria did they use, you know, and who, who is the technical team? You know, because we need to talk to them, you know?
Yeah, so the Maryland, so the technical team is on this call, but, but the, all of the information in the actual review, besides what was presented during the hearing portion, is in that docket. So please look at that, ask questions, and we can answer those questions, um, in more detail, in a different form, the technical. But the, there is a tentative determination, actually, that does discuss how the emissions were estimated by the Department of Environment.
Where, where, where is the docket?
Okay, so it's on MDE.Maryland.gov, and then the air permits landing page. I think I showed everybody a couple different times on the website.
Yeah, can you bring that up? Is it still available?
Uh, yeah, I can bring it back up.
So those of you who came in a little late, um, and the, uh, the, the, uh, the link for what, Ayesha? The link for the-
So this is the MDE.Maryland.gov. This is our main webpage. Go to the air tab at the top. Air Quality Permit. This is also in the notice. If you got a copy of the notice, then there's a link to that information as well. Then if you scroll down, you will see WR Grace is listed as a scheduled public hearing for today. And this docket, when you click on this docket, it's full of information, um, technical information. So please look through that. Uh, we're accepting comment through July 29. Um, and in fact, I think what I'll do is I'll just show you this docket of information that's available. Right, so is this from the very beginning of this process, when the application was received? Sorry, I'm just gonna do a quick scroll, but there's lots and lots of information in here. I know some people did already look at this. I thank you guys for looking through it. There's also a draft permit, but what I was talking about is this technical review document, which talks about, if I could scroll fast enough, the tech, if you can see, this is not a short permit. Um, the technical review document here that kinda goes into detail about our review, what we can consider under our authority, right? Uh, to issue an air quality permit construct, this is what you wanna take a look at. Okay? And that's in the docket online when you click on that link. You just might have to search all the way through, because we started this process, uh, at the end of last year.
Okay, but, but how come, how come you started the project in December, when you know that people are not paying attention? Was that the main reason why you, you, you put the document out in December?
Uh, no, not the reason at all. No.
No.
How come you didn't put it up earlier than, uh, say, September?
It's for the same application.
And it was on our website this entire time. We did notify elected officials and all elected officials within one mile. However, it was legislative session. I know people were busy, so this time around, when we went for opportunity for public hearing, we did get comments, and we did get comments from elected officials, but those notices did go out when we first received the application.
Yeah, but, but also, we are very primed to, uh, Grace. We are right behind Grace. So how come nobody contacted our HOA? You know, I mean, it's a public information of our community, so.
Well, I can answer, I'd be happy to answer that.
Yeah, go ahead.
When we send out the information to the elected officials and interested parties that I have on record, um, quite often I will receive information from an elected official saying, hey, you know, here are, are associations, please notify them. And then I'm happy to send something out. Um, in this case, it was, um, a person from one of the community associations had been in contact with Councilwoman Junk, which was great, um, and they were able to, excuse me, um, and Delegate Atterbury. And they were able to go through and start notifying some people. Um, as of now, I have all of you guys, and I have the contact information for a lot of these, um, oh, thank you, Sana. Um, I have the contact information for a lot of the community associations now. So, um, I will make sure that all of these are for any future, um, actually, I'll ask you guys. Um, anything future in your area, you'll be notified about, in, whether it's a Grace project or any other project. Um, and if you are aware of folks that were interested and couldn't, you know, couldn't join in tonight, like Sana said, this whole thing is being recorded. It'll be processed, so we can go into a file that we can put up online and, and get, hopefully we can email it out. That's how big the file is.
I think we're, we're gonna email it out, I think.
Oh, good.
And that it can be shareable, because I think it's gonna be a YouTube link. I mean, it, it depends on how big the file is and what IT will do to it, what, how they're gonna be able to share that. But we'll share that information.
And it, yeah.
Is that a public hearing again?
Uh, no, this is a public hearing, so.
Another one?
No, no, this was one public hearing, one informational meeting, and one public hearing in an air quality permit process. Um, with the extension of the comment period through July 29th, that's giving everybody extra time to read through the docket, uh, contact us with some questions, and again, you know, submit, you know, uh, formal statements during that time in writing to my attention. Um, and at the end of that, when we have all the comments submitted, we'll be doing the, uh, review of all of them. We'll be addressing all of them in the response to comments document, then you will all receive a copy of. So you will know all the questions that were asked, all the questions that are, all the answers, there'll all be, you know, what everybody can look through. Um, so, and, and in the meantime, if you have some, you know, here and there questions, if you look through the docket and something doesn't make sense, please send me an email. We'll make sure we get it to the permit engineers, and we'll, we'll get those answered for you. Um, someone just said, how many elected officials? It is the state senators, delegates, uh, Howard County Executive, the Howard County Council, um, and that's within one mile, and then, I mean, within the-
And the Howard County Health Department.
And the Health Department, thank you. And we are also, um, sent out in, the same information to, um, every elected official within a one-mile radius of the, where the Grace facility is. Um, so we had quite a list of, of, of officials that we had sent everything out to, so.
Okay, so we have way more people that, uh, that raised their hands for comment, and then I think-
Okay.
We need to close the hearing, but like I said, this is not the closure of the permit itself. We have, we are open, the comment period is open until July 29. Um, so I think it's, it's I Matters, I think is the name of the Google, if you wanna unmute yourself, if you had a comment for the record.
Sure. Yeah, on the permits criteria, uh, do you consider the, the distance of the residential areas from the pilot facility? Because we're talking here, we're not talking about half a mile or 200 meters. As Paula mentioned, we are, we're just 30 or 40 yards away from the, from the building site.
Um, so we will, we'll prepare formally, but I can't answer that. We do take, we, we actually regulate the emission at the property line, so they cannot violate air quality standards at their property line and beyond. So it's actually more stringent than where the residences are located.
A property line to our neighborhood?
To the nearest property line of Grace, yes. That's where they must eventually complain.
We're talking about 30 yards. Definitely, we see that. It's about 30 or 40 yards away from the, from the border, from the, from the fence. So my, my, my comment is, well, should that be a factor? Should that be considered there? Not just the emission, but how far away is the pilot facility from the residential neighborhood? Right? I mean, it's not, not fucking a half a mile or a mile, just 30 yards away.
Yes, so property line, where their property line is and their distance to residence is taken into consideration during our review. But we'll, we'll send a more formal response that describes that entire process for you. Okay. Okay. Uh, Paul Toscano, your comment?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Uh, I just wanna go on the record that I'm not in support of the permit. Uh, I know there's been a lot of back and forth on, you know, additional information, and just, uh, I, I, I'm just not in support. Just wanna make that clear.
Okay, thank you. And then we have, uh, um, Azebi Anasikin?
Yes, uh, thank you. I just wanted to, um, so it, it seems like this process, this process has already started. Very poor, in my opinion, um, poor communication with the, the residents that are probably the most affected by this, number one. Number two, I want to just, and again, it just seems like we're, we're playing hot potato here. We're asking for very clear answers, and no one's giving that to us. So I'll ask again. What weight, uh, do or does opposition to this, um, permit carry? I, that's what I want to know, number one. Number two, who do we need to reach out to? Who are the elected officials we need to be sounding the alarm to? Because those officials do not live backdoor to Grace. They're wherever they are. So I just want to know for myself, my children, and my family, and my neighbors as well, what I need to do, or what we need to do collectively to stop this from happening. And I don't think anyone on this call is giving us a clear path. I think that is what Ayesha, that is what everyone on this call is asking, and yet we're being told to read some 200-plus document. We don't have time, but we don't have, the, the time is running. So we need to know quickly, clearly, concisely, what is the path forward for us, and how do we attain what we want? Thanks.
You were asking, um, you, you couldn't contact your officials, your representatives, um, your Howard County official, your Howard County Executive, your delegates, your, um, senators directly, to get their input, um, and their assistance in moving this. But, um, as, as we are, the way our regulations are written, what we are required to do, um, is, is emissions-based. Um, it is going to be, you know, are the, is this project, is any project, going to meet the air quality limitations? And if the air quality limitations are met, then we're going to have to look into being able to issue the permit. Um, again, the only other thing I can think of is, is contacting your zoning people, and definitely contact your local officials who can help you through what else has to be done. Um, but, and, and again, if we find something that comes up during the comments, um, it, it happens when, uh, a concerned citizen actually knows more information about something than we know, and then that takes, we have to take that into account. We go back and review everything again. So, um, we will be looking at all the comments that come in. We are sometimes told things we were not aware of when we're getting ready to make a final determination. That does change things. Um, so please send me the emails, and we'll look through your comments. Um, and, and July 29th, you have until then, um, to send in additional comments or formal testimony, um, after you've spoken with some folks, or, or done the reviews, or, um, asked us informal questions, we can get the answers to you for. Um, there's plenty of time, and every comment and every question will be reviewed and addressed. That I can promise. Um, it can be hundreds, we'll still do it.
Right, but just to clarify, you're saying that despite us saying we do not approve this, or we are not in support, that does not have any weight? That we need to fight one, because you are essentially saying that if, we can, we can voice our opposition to this, that's, that's okay. Like, this is a forum to do that, but that doesn't have any real value, that you are already on, on, on the path to approving this permit. That, that is what I'm hearing. That, yes or no, please?
Uh, uh, there's more than, more than just a yes or no. Um, because we are required with very specific limitations, um, not our limitations, the emissions limitations. Um, and there could be some additional county limitations, like, um, someone was talking about a noise level. Um, those are things that are outside of our control, but maybe within the county, so you could speak with those folks. Um, there are sometimes something that can be done that's outside of a permit, um, in terms of maybe operating hours or something. So, um, we're limited in what we can do issue-wise, or, or, well, we can, we can, we can refuse to issue a permit if it's definitely not gonna meet our air quality standards. But, um, if, if they do have the zoning, proper zoning, and they will meet our very strict requirements, um, those are our benchmarks for whether we can or can't issue a permit. So although we know that people are, are obviously very interested in what's going on, um, it does make a difference in, um, a global review, that again, may, may not be necessarily in the permit. Can't guarantee, because we have to review everything. Um, but I would definitely, your, your, your elected officials are interested. They've expressed interest to us. Um, so, you know, please contact them. I'm not putting everything on them, but they may be able to guide you through things, um, that the county might require that I won't know about, because it's not within the state, if that makes sense. Um, but, um, what I'd like to do is, is we're getting, oh yeah, oh my gosh, it's quarter of nine. Um, I do wanna make sure I can answer the questions I can. Please email me. Um, I did put my email up in the chat box. Um, and we'll see what we can get through to you to get as much information as we can to you. Um, and again, uh, call me, email me. Uh, if I don't have an answer, I'll try to get one from either the permit engineer or from the company, um, and whatever else we can find out. I will be reaching out to the other, um, communities, associations. I'm gonna try and get more contact information to make sure as we go through this, that, um, everybody who's interested will get notified. Um, oh, and again, please pass my email on to anybody who wanted to participate but couldn't. Um, it, that would be great, and I will make sure they get on these lists so that we can get information out to them as soon as I have it to send out. Um, but I wanna thank you. Um, I'm gonna close the hearing part right now. Um, it is 8:45 on April 29th, and if we have a few minutes after, if you guys, uh, we have time to stick around for a little bit. But I do wanna get this hearing closed, so we can get rolling on the answers and the questions. Um, and I wanna thank everyone. Oh my gosh, thank you.
Please submit, please submit them to Shannon. I know that we're still a few raised hands here, because as you think of questions, I know you're gonna have more additional questions and comments. So I want you to go through and look at those documents, ask Shannon questions, submit all of that. And also Delegate Tarasus, thank you for posting this in the comment period. She says, while the approval process is within the Maryland Department of Environment, it certainly helps to reach out to your elected officials, including the governor, the county executive, council members, your state officials, your state delegates, right near Grace, our State District 13. right near Grace or State District 13. And Delegate Tarassa is one of the delegates who represents that district as is Delegate Vanessa Atterbury, Pam Gazoni and Senator Guy Gazoni. So you can definitely contact them. There's the Maryland General Assembly website. And you can also send an email, Jen Tarassa has, Jen dot Tarassa at house dot state dot M D dot U S. And she will also respond and give other officials contact information. So she is, she is out there and available for you guys. This is also another method or another way for you to oppose the project and let your elected officials know. We, we cannot do anything outside of our authority unfortunately for an air quality permit to construct. But you may be able to find other, other, other reasons or, or other ways to be able to contact people that may be able to impact whether this permit in the end, if, if it's even deemed to be formidable, is actually going to be issued in the end. But yes, so please contact your elected officials. I think that's a good first start.
Actually, I'm going to cut you off for just a quick second. Couple of people put in the chat that they would like to have the names of the elected officials. And I will certainly send it out to Ms. Raisa's contact information and sure that she can pass it on to the folks that were asking about it. I really appreciate that. Oh, and all of you actually, thank you very much. So yes, I'll make sure that the, that the people who, the elected officials list is made available for the folks who are asking about it. So I'm sorry. And Mr. Adely, you had another question?
Yeah, I said that because they're short notice, we need a second public hearing. I think it's very important because what you guys are trying to do is to sweep this under the rug and move on with comments. No, I think now that we are aware of what is happening, we need a second public hearing. You know, it's very important that we hear all the voices because.